Good morning. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for June 7, 2022 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until July 15, 2022. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the WebEx event, sorry, via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the meeting as panelists, and they will appear alongside, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting, as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen, screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive a request from the host. Again, for those of you on the telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand, and star six to unmute yourself. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Please remember to also lower your hand once you've made your comment. So let me take a quick roll call of members. Mr. Fortune?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Olick.
Yes.
Ms. Dom.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Ligris.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Robinson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Panato.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, and on behalf of the BPD, Mr. Hampton.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, and on behalf of the BTD, Mr. D'Amico.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Fortune, it's yours.
Madam Chair, the first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of May 10 of 2022. We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, we may have some technical difficulties on video for myself right now, but I'm sure you can hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. I'm gonna call the first extension, calling BOA 896-779-779 to 779A Dorchester Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston, representing the property owner, John Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Moranci, regarding 779-779A Dorchester Ave. The board originally granted this relief on November 1 of 2019 and would have expired on November 1 of 2021, but COVID tolling applies to this relief. With tolling, the relief expires on February 6 of 2023. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the relief remains valid until that date.
Madam Chair, I'll propose a motion to confirm that relief remains valid with any and all applicable tolling through February 6, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case for extension, calling BOA 898-19140 Mount Hood Road. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Jared Augerman, Ruben Geniuson Rose, 112 Water Street, Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Augerman. This regarding 40 Mount Hood Road, the board originally granted its relief on March 1 of 2019, but it was appealed to the Superior Court. The court, the court case was dismissed, and with the litigation tolling, this relief would have expired on June 27 of 2021. The board did grant an extension until June 27 of 2022. However, COVID tolling also applies to this relief, so that extension was not necessary. With COVID tolling, this relief remains valid until October 2 of 2022. I recommended the board confirm for the record that the relief remains valid until that date. The applicant now also requests an extension until June 27 of 2023. I recommend that the board grant that additional extension if it determines that the appropriate under the circumstances, noting that this would be the applicant's first necessary extension.
Madam Chair, a motion to confirm that relief remains valid with any and all applicable tolling through October 2 of 2022. Further move that an extension, additional extension be granted through June 27, 2023, which of course will include any and all applicable tolling.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 903-635-235 Leighton Street. There's a companion case, BOA 903-636-237 Leighton Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, on behalf of Attorney Lawrence Cutino, covering the request for extension of 235 and 237 Leighton Street.
Thank you, Mr. Lins. Regarding 235, 237 Leighton Street, the board granted relief to these companion cases on June 14 of 2019, and it granted its first extension of relief until June 14 of 2022. However, COVID, COVID tolling applies to this relief, so the extension was unnecessary. With tolling, this relief remains valid until September 19 of 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the relief remains valid until that date. The applicant now also requests an extension until June 14 of 2023. I recommend that the board grant that additional extension if it determines that the appropriate under the circumstances, noting that this would be the applicant's first necessary extension.
Madam Chair, here I move to confirm that relief remains valid with any and all applicable tolling through September 19 of 2022. I further move to confirm an additional extension through June 14, 2023, which of course will include any and all applicable tolling.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the last case for extension, calling BOA 687-533-51 Breed Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Lins. Regarding the COVID tolling applied to this board's first extension of this relief, with tolling, that first extension remained valid until October 5 of 2021. However, the board granted an extension on June 30 of 2021 until June 30 of 2022. That covered the tolling period. That extension was unnecessary. The applicant now requests an additional one-year extension. I recommended the board grant relief for this extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in six of June 30, 2023. This would be the applicant's only second necessary extension.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to confirm that any and all relief, including all applicable tolling, remains valid until June 30, 2022. I further move that an additional extension is granted with relief valid now through June 30, 2023, which of course will include any and all applicable tolling.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Lins, this is your second, your second, you know, legitimate extension, so hopefully we'll see some action on the project.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling the next case, the board final arbiter, calling case BOA 105-5809, 167 Lexington Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Ekel with Drago and Toscano with a business address of 11 Beacon Street here in Boston, on behalf of 167 Lexington Street. We are here this morning for board final arbiter on 167 Lexington. This case was previously approved back on July 27 of 2021, which included approvals to change the occupancy to a three-family and renovate the structure. Part of that approval included a third-floor dormer. That dormer extends over a bedroom, kitchen, and bathroom. So what we're seeking here this morning is to further extend that dormer about nine feet, a little bit closer to the street, which would include allowing headspace over the existing stairwell. Right now, the existing stairwell has been in existence for some time to the third floor, but due to current codes, it doesn't have the proper egress and ingress head height clearance. So we're seeking just to match the existing slope and roof pitch of the current dormer and just allow for that proper egress.
Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are good, very straightforward, just extending an existing dormer. No questions.
Mr. Hampton from the BPDA?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not aware of any of the board final arbiter issues going on, so, but I just want to make clear that this would be done to comply with current codes, correct? And it's not just an extension?
Correct. Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. I'll second the motion, provided there's no code relief.
May I just ask, Mr. Robinson, do we want continued BPDA design review?
Yes, I guess.
I would ask for that, Madam Chair, yes.
Yes.
Agree. BPDA design review.
And no code relief? Is there, and there's a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, the board final arbiter, calling BOA 114-3458, 3371 to 3375 Washington Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Brian Goldson, one of the owners of New Atlantic Development, business address of 236 Huntington Ave. This project is a 39-unit, senior, 100% affordable project that was granted relief last February. Subsequently to that, our butter to the south had filed suit challenging that zoning decision. Through mediation process, we have arrived at a settlement that's been signed by all parties. That settlement included minor modifications to the footprint of the building, pulling the building back from the butter's property line, and we're before the board today just to pose that modification to you and confirm compliance.
So tell us what it's moving from and what, what the new, the new, the new destination is, and if it's side or rear?
It was a side lot property line. It actually did not require any side yard setback, and the previous design was built up to the property line. It was six inches back, but for all intents and purposes, built up to the side lot line. Again, no side setback was required, but through the, through the mediation process, we agreed to pull the building back five feet from that side yard property line, and that's best modification to the new design. We fall under all the previously granted relief. The only modification is the FAR is slightly reduced from the previous submission.
May I have a motion, please? I'm sorry, Mr. Robinson, everything good on the plans?
Everything's generally good. I just have one question for the proponent. The previous design had a sort of an inset to break up the massing along Washington. Is that remaining, or is it now a straight face the whole way back?
We had a habitable courtyard that went all the way down to the ground floor initially. Instead, we have a minor inset on the upper floors on two, two through five, just to allow some, some additional windows there. So there is some relief. It's not as deep as it was before, but that was, that was the accommodation we had to make when we pulled the building back five feet. But it did also allow us to add windows on that elevation as well.
Okay, thank you. No further questions on the plans.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. I assume with BPA design review, this is an Article 80 project.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
On the last case, the board final arbiter, calling BOA 937-921, 1449 to 1453 Hot Pocket Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent the property owner, David Higgins. Madam Chair, members, the board on March 23, 2021, approved this application for zoning relief, which included a variance for insufficient off-street parking. The petition is submitted, and the board approved a site plan depicting 11 off-street parking spaces for 11 units. After board approval, the BBDA in the exercise with design review authority reduced the number of parking spaces from 11 to eight. This went to the plans examiner at the inspectional services department, who recognizes that no new zoning violation is created owing to the previous granted variance for insufficient off-street parking, but wanted this matter to be reviewed by the board acting in its board final arbiter capacity to approve the new site plan depicting eight parking spaces.
Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans look good in terms of the proposed layout. Parking is screened and buffered. No questions on the proposal.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPA review.
BPA design review is completed, sorry. We already had.
We generated this?
Yeah, so it was our recommendation to do this.
Got it. All good. Then approve, make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
It's the G card, calling case BOA 131-6265, 137 West Newton Street. This is an interior renovation and a new fire protection system, new groundwater system. Violation to Article 32, Section 4, G card. Name and address for the record, please. Someone on from 137 West Newton Street.
Nicholas Highland here with, I'm Holland with Sons Construction, business address 519 Albany Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Anybody here to speak on G card?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. We have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have those letters as well.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So you're all set. Good luck, and thank you, Christian.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're gonna call the 9:30 hearings for any deferrals or withdrawals. If you can give me the address first, please. So this is 9:30 cases for deferrals or withdrawal. Hearing none, we'll go to the first case, calling case BOA 127-268-13514, Washington Street. This is a change of act from a daycare center to retail in two dwelling units, construct a two-story addition with roof deck for two dwelling units above the existing building. Proposed two off-street parking with easement access. Violation to Article 55, Section 19, two dwelling units forbidden use, Article 55, Section 20, the floor area ratio is excessive, Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Timothy Burke. I'm the architect for the project. I have a business address of 142 Berkeley Street in Boston, and I'm representing the owner, Omair Hecht, who is also here at the meeting.
Tell us what's being proposed.
3514 Washington is an existing one-story masonry building, and the, my client has recently renovated the first floor, which had been long vacant for his business, and we are seeking permission to add two stories on the, above this existing structure to provide two apartments. They would be, each unit would be approximately 1,300 square feet and would have two bedrooms and two and a half baths, and there would be a 340-square-foot roof deck for each unit to provide some exterior space. And it's been designed to work well with the community, and we didn't receive very good response from the community hearings and have submitted letters of support as well.
Now, Mr. Burke, let's, let's just walk through this. This is a local industrial zone. Tell us why this is, is compatible to that, to that district?
We are maintaining the, the commercial use on the ground floor, and it's a very traditional and successful approach to have residences above the commercial space.
So this is a local industrial. Tell us if there are any other residential uses in this block?
Next door is a residential use directly next door to us, to the south, and then there are the other units, there are three other units in this particular row of buildings, and they are all one-story at the present time, but certainly the other neighbors are interested in doing something similar to this.
Okay, and tell us about how parking is, is proposed to work?
The first drawing does show the site plan. There is access from the north end of the building that provides parking at the rear there, and you can see the two spots that are indicated on the plan.
And is the, are those spots for the residential or the commercial use?
They would, the owner is probably gonna give those to the residential use, yes.
And what is the commercial use?
It's analog photography, so it, they take care of camera sales and maintenance and service for the traditional photograph, photography.
Okay, and then tell us about the roof decks? How are they accessed?
They would be accessed through a daylighter hatch, so it's a low-profile hatch. It's only 30 inches above the roof deck, and also brings in natural light into the space below, which is very good. And they would have a regular stair up to that hatch and then step onto the deck. Each deck would be separated from the other by a privacy screen.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans, plans are generally good. I think no real issues on the proposal. I guess I did have a question about the rest of the block. It sort of seems like one of the future four. So is this owner, these are individual condos on the ground floor, is that?
Yeah, they're individual ownership, yes. They're separate parcels, yeah.
Got it, okay. And then the residential egress access, is that through the rear, or is it from, to the front? I only see a single door.
This would be fully sprinkled, and it would be a single exit type of occupancy.
But it's, they're, they're exiting out the front onto Washington?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so the retail and the residential, they share an entry?
Right, we're not changing that, but still be a single door at the street level, yes.
Got it, okay. No other questions for me on the project?
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tiffany Caballero here with the mayor's office of neighborhood services, and a butter's meeting was facilitated by our office back on January 18, which was very lately attended with little to zero neighborhood reservations about this proposal. This proposal also received support from the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association, along with the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council Zoning Subcommittee. At this time, the mayor's office would like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary, we have those letters of support as well.
Madam Chair, I have no raise hands, thank you.
May I, Jeff, did you get the BPDA recommendations on this?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommended approval with design review. Most of you probably know this stretch of Washington, it's right across the street from English, right down the street from Doyle's, which is now gonna be residential, and this property actually backs up to a residential district, so we're on record in going with support with design review.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPA design review. I think it'd be great to look at its relationship to the addition to the, the base retail. It looks a little bit like a hat sitting on top right now, but I think there could be a couple things that could be done to make it feel more integrated to the base, so.
Really, really good recommendation. Is there a second?
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, the board final arbiter, calling case BOA 132-1921-720, William T. Morrissey Boulevard. This erect a new four-story building with 112,600 square feet to be used for automobile dealership, to include showroom, service-based indoor parking for 222 vehicles, office storage, exterior parking for 171 vehicles. The violation is Article 65, Section 15. Automobile dealership with accessories, repair garage, indoor vehicle storage, and offices in additional use for CC sub-district. Article 65, Section 16, insufficient rear yards, and Article 65, Section 16, excessive building height and fee. Name and address for the record, please.
Fallsorto, 21 McGrath Highway, Coons, Mass, representing Herb Chambers Companies.
So tell us in detail what you're proposing to do here?
What we've done is, well, three years ago, we moved the prior Honda dealership from Commonwealth Ave in Austin to this location. We occupy the former J.B. Bytrider Westminster Dodge site, which has been a car dealership since around 1969. We propose, we, it is a tied building on a tied site, almost no drainage. We're gonna propose a state-of-the-art four-story building to internalize a lot of our operations with double high-speed doors coming in, with valets taking people's cars. You'll see on this first-floor plan on the right, the eight cars that we can queue inside. We are enhancing, this isn't a landscape plan, but the green will show the existing landscape is about nil. We will be enhancing the landscaping on three sides and including pocket parks, which don't show, but they're on the Victory, Victory-Freeporth corner and the Morrissey-Freeporth corner, with benches, pavers, lighting, trees, and we will be proposing, we're proposing a 10-foot sidewalk to operate as a pedestrian and bike path, and eventually that's on Victory, and that will connect the proposed ECR bike pedestrian lane that's gonna go in on Morrissey to, to the proposed trail extension of the, the Posit Valley Trail that will run along the expressway. The building's been through the BCDC process, the BPDA process, constipation, all those agencies.
Hold on, hold on a minute, please.
Sorry, sorry.
Cameron, Cameron, can you please back up to the, to the first, first plan? Yes, thank you. To- To, yeah, this is perfect.
That's good.
So we have a couple of questions. How many outdoor parking spaces are you proposing?
Two hundred and twenty-two.
So that's two hundred and twenty-two.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one seventy-one outside, two twenty-two inside.
One seventy-one outside and two twenty-two interior, okay?
Correct.
And will that exterior space be using pervious or impervious materials?
We will be a combination of the both. We're trying to maximize wherever we can where it won't be damaged by snowplows and things, the pervious materials to help us comply with our twenty-five and other provisions.
Okay, and then will there be any car repair here or car maintenance?
Yes, there'll be the usual full-service car dealership, which is why we get the conditional use permit, as in most. We have five dealerships on Commonwealth Avenue, and they all require conditional use permits if we do any substantial changes.
So for full service, how many?
Full-service car dealership, yes.
Yes, how many vehicles do you anticipate at any given point?
The repair will be in the vicinity of about twenty-five.
Okay, and how many staff are you anticipating?
How many what?
Staff?
We don't have any stackers planned at this time, just the lifts on the first floor.
Okay, any staff, a number of staff people?
Oh, staff, yes, probably forty staff, forty to fifty staff. And it's.
And any strategy to hire from the neighborhood?
Excuse me?
Any strategy to hire from the neighborhood?
Yes, there will be, because it will be, we're increasing the size of the dealership considerably. We will have an outreach site to draw affair with the neighborhood. We'll coordinate that with Councilor Baker and the other community leaders.
Okay, and how about signage?
Signage?
Any freestanding signs?
There are, those have been previously approved by the BPA Evergreen Ordinance. And essentially, we're just replicating what had been there. Nothing any higher, nothing besides, I think, shows up in the rendering, which is, I think, been submitted. It is, I believe, twenty-two feet, twenty-four feet. And on the highway side, forty feet. This, the state put up two salt sheds between us and the expressway, thereby blocking most of the visibility for the signage that's signed on the Freeport side. But yes, there are pre-existing height have already had been approved by the BPA when we moved the dealership.
How are the, thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. You asked my question, and I was a little bit worried about the site planning and making sure that it was following the, some of the issues associated with. I know there's water issues over there and the Morrissey Boulevard expansion, so that's been answered. So I have no other questions for the proponent.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, good morning. Joe McEckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in support of the project today.
Okay, Minor, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Minor Pritchard, representing the Carpenter Senior. We want to go on record in support of the project.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton. The BPA Board voted to approve this project on March tenth. It's going to be a well-welcome improvement to Morrissey Boulevard. Toyota has pretty much the same kind of structure right next to it across the way. They are going to help with the redesign and the improvement of Morrissey Boulevard as well as Freeport Street to the back, which is now undergoing a massive redevelopment where Phillips Old Colony House used to be. So we're in support of this with design review.
Okay, and on the signage, I don't remember the signage coming to us, but have, has it in fact been approved by this board?
I don't, I don't believe the signage would come to you, because usually signage comes straight to us for approval through our urban design.
Okay, so it has, okay.
Yep.
Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, BPA design review.
I'll second that, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So you're all set, good luck.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, board members.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one three two zero six nine three, three eighty-six Ashmont Street. This is a change of art from two units to three units by subdividing Unit B from one unit into two units and adding a rear deck. The violation is Article sixty-five, section eight. The applicant proposes to change the use from a two-family to a three-family. And Article sixty-five, section nine, side yard insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Is there anybody on for three eighty-six Ashmont Street?
I have a hand raised, David, are you here for Ashmont Street?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, yep. You just made your panel. Oh, one second, when I made you a panelist, it unmuted you. Can you just unmute yourself again?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. David Blandino, I am the homeowner at three eighty-six Ashmont Street in Dorchester. We are proposing to change occupancy from a two-unit, existing two-unit into a three-unit and adding a rear porch in the back.
So tell us the, how this is going to happen? Where is, how is the third unit proposed to happen?
So the third unit already, floor already exists. We're changing a bedroom into a kitchen. We are changing a living room on the second floor into a bedroom. It's going to go from a single four-bedroom unit into two, two-bedroom units.
Okay.
We've had, we've had full approval from the association.
So, you know, so what I, what I need for you to tell us and put on the record is the unit size of each of the units?
So each unit will be around thirteen hundred square feet each?
Okay, and each will be two-bedroom?
Two bedrooms with one and a half bathrooms each.
Okay, thirteen hundred square feet, and tell us about that deck?
So the rear, the third floor will just be added on top of the existing first two-floor deck. So there's already two-floor deck existing, and we're just going to add a third-floor deck on top of it for means of egress.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. It is very straightforward. All interior work generally, except for the rear egress stair. Seems pretty straightforward, no real questions for me on proposal.
And the floor to ceiling height works on the third floor?
It appears to work. There's not, there is, sorry, it's eight feet clear, yes. And there's, and just to confirm, there's no, there's no, nothing in the basement in terms of living.
Okay, excellent. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, so the, I mean, the only violation is the side yard setback, but is that?
No, it's the, the second violation is the use is forbidden, because this is a two-family district, and he wants to translate it into a three-family.
Okay, but the side yard setback is existing condition, correct? Okay.
Correct.
Yep.
It is, yeah.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Wynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted a Butters meeting for this proposal on April twentieth. It was met with unanimous support from the Butters as the proponent has been a wonderful neighbor and also demonstrated its necessity. The Saint Marks Area Civic Association has written a letter of support. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Minor?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in support. It's a great family that lived there forever, and we wish them well.
Do they still live there? Joe?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Secretary, here, we have one letter from the Saint Marks, that's it.
Okay, we'll have no additional raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There is a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one two eight three eight three four, ninety-two Theodore Parker Road. This erect a new single-family with one-car garage. The violation is Article fifty-six, section eight, insufficient lot width. Article fifty-six, section eight, insufficient lot width frontage. Article fifty-six, section eight, excessive FAR. Article fifty-six, section eight, insufficient lot size. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pulgeni on behalf of the applicant here today. This is, as Mr. Fortune stated, ninety-two Theodore Parker Road. The zoning in this neighborhood is one-family, six thousand. The lot size is five thousand two hundred and fifty-two square feet. The proposal is to build a single-family home with garage parking. I'm just going to quickly go through the violations. Lot width per the code is sixty, we're at fifty-five feet. Lot frontage sixty, again, fifty-five feet. Lot size is six thousand, we're at five thousand two hundred and fifty-two square feet. And FAR allowed is point four, we're a little over there at point four-eight. The makeup of the house is a twenty-five hundred square foot house, four beds, two and a half baths. The basement.
Sorry, is it twenty-four hundred?
The square foot is twenty-five hundred square feet, Madam Chair.
Sorry, go ahead, yeah.
And it's made up of four beds and two and a half baths. Basement is unfinished, and, you know, this is, looking at this lot compared to the other lots in the neighborhood, this is totally consistent with what's existing.
So, Mr. Pulgeni, this is a two-and-a-half story, so it meets the height requirement?
Yes, we do not have a height requirement. We don't have any setback requirements. The only requirement, the only, that, obviously, the lots in that neighborhood are all substandard with respect to lot frontage. And as you know, lot width and lot frontage go hand in hand. The, it's just the lot size. But again, that is again consistent with most of the homes in the neighborhood, Madam Chair.
Okay, and I think, I think this board is very aware that sometimes reviewing a one-family, proposed one-family dwelling in a one-family district may be one of the hardest projects that we, we encounter over the years. And this is not a recent thing, it's going back quite a few decades. And so, let's see, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no questions necessarily on the proposed project. I just had a question. So is ninety-two and eight, is that an eight or is eighty-eight? Is this being a subdivision plan or is eighty-eight?
It's two separately, it's two separate lots, Eric.
So this proposal's not throwing eighty-eight into some other violations or anything?
No, it's not.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that. It looks like it's the existing garage for eighty-eight, but?
It's actually on ninety-two. The permit was pulled back in nineteen forty-six, so we went through that with the estate.
Okay, got you, all right.
Thank you.
And when you said there was no side yard or rear yard setback requirements, you mean there was, there was no violations?
Yes, if I misread, yes, violations. Yeah, we're compliant with that, correct.
Okay, no other questions from me, thanks.
Any questions from the board? Okay, I'm going to be, I'm going to be opening this for comments, but before I do, I would like to make sure that we hear from elected officials and representatives of elected officials first, and then I will take comments from five community members. When you give your comments, let me give, please use your time to give us new information. If you are just, if the information has already been presented and you're basically in support or in opposition, just let us know, okay? So, Miss Ambassador, we leave it in your good hands.
Great, okay, I'll start with Devlin. I sent a request on you, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Excuse me, can I, can I hop in just to start?
Oh, go ahead, yep, go on.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jake Lacy from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. For the community process, two community meetings were hosted. One on March twenty-second hosted by the Office of Neighborhood Services, another hosted by the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on April nineteenth. At the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, the zoning committee voted four-two in opposition of this project. We have received numerous letters, both in support and opposition of this project, with opposition primarily coming from those directive others in the area with concerns about excessive FAR and also parking. At this time, we defer decision to the board. Thank you.
Any other elected officials?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council, Alage Michael Flaherty. At this particular time, we'll leave it to the board's discretion. However, in our opinion, this project may benefit from a deferral. However, our office has received numerous emails and phone calls in opposition. We are aware that there is some support amongst some of the Butters. However, at this particular point, due to the, due to the opposition to the project within the neighborhood, the council will stand with the neighborhood in opposition. And just for the, for the board's certification, the, I believe the majority of the opposition comes from the size of the proposed home.
Thank you. Okay, Devlin, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to give my support for the project. I'm a neighbor.
Please put your name and address on the record.
Sure, it's Eileen Duggan, and I'm at twenty-five Pier Pond Road, West Roxbury.
Thank you. Teresa Driscoll sent a request to unmute you. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Oh, hi, my name is, my name is Teresa Driscoll, and I live at one oh six Theodore Parker Road. And I oppose the project, and I would like to just make a very brief statement. First, I would like to correct.
So, Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
What is your opposition based on?
So it is based on many factors. It is based on, on size, and the attorney incorrectly stated that all of the lot sizes are, you know, it's typical. The average lot size on our street is sixty-one hundred square feet. And the homes that do not meet the six thousand requirement were all built in the early nineteen hundreds, so it does not seem like a fair comparison. But my, it is the size of the project, and it's also the developer's track record. If you look at his project on Church Street, if you look at the building plans, his three.
Which project did he do on?
He has the Holy Name Project.
Oh, the one of Center, okay, got it.
Exactly, so they are numbers two, eight, and ten. If you look at the building plans, the elevation of the homes are identical. In reality, the elevation of number ten is much higher. And when asked, Mr. Ferraro said that that happened because there was a water table issue when they began construction.
Okay, thank you.
Theodore Parker also has a water table issue. So I want to point out, we don't know, you know, that that is something that could happen. And it's primarily the size of his home, the size of the home and his track record.
Thank you.
Okay, and Joshua Jensen, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name's Joshua Jensen. My wife and I are the homeowners of one hundred Theodore Parker Road. We're both nurses in the city, and we are raising our three young children here. We are directive others to the proposed project ninety-two ninety-six Theodore Parker Road. Like to go on record in opposition to this project. Reasons being, and just to be clear, we're not opposed to development, but we are opposed to this development for squeezing in an oversized house with lack of hardship. It will remove green space that serves as scarce and serves as the, serves as the two, sorry, excuse me. It will remove scarce green space that also serves the two-family home of ninety-six Theodore Parker Road. It will overdensify the neighborhood and does not fit the character of the neighborhood. There are seven of Butters and even more neighbors on the street who oppose this project. And additionally, as you know, the West Roxbury Neighborhood Committee voted in opposition as well. For these reasons.
Thank you, let's get to the next person, please.
Okay, and a caller six one seven seven one nine sent a request to unmute you. Hi, caller, can you hear us?
Can you, can you hear me? Yep, how are you?
Can you state your name and address for the record?
My name is, my name is Paul Hardeman. I live at eighty-eight Theodore Parker Road. I'm a directive others to this project. And my wife and I are in full support of this project as designed. I don't see any problem with the project, and I love the design, and it's going to be a great. a great value to the neighborhood.
Thank you. All right, I'm trying to keep going, I do have two additional raise hands.
Yeah, what is, what is, yeah, let's just get to these two and then, and close off comment.
Okay, GMG, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Sent a request on you.
Yes, the name, the name is Gerard M. Green, and with my wife Mary Lou Amrine. We live at 7 Halford Road, which is around the corner from the proposed project development. Yesterday, I submitted to the board in my email-
So, can you just tell us whether you're in support or in opposition, and what that, that support or opposition is based on?
In opposition.
Okay, thank you.
And that is based upon the excessive FAR narrowly.
Thank you. Ms. Ambassador, the next person?
Yep, Jean, go ahead, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hello, my name is Jean Amine, I live at 17 Pier Pond. Reminder, zoning regulations are checked and balances, need-
Did, did we just hear from a family member of yours?
Nope, you've been unmuted, Jean.
That's okay, okay.
Jean, you're unmuted, if you're still talking, can't hear you. Sure, I have no additional raise hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please? Given that information, may I have a motion, please? Because generally, we do not take comments from two members of the same family. So, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, could I just make one quick statement? It's John Pulgeni.
Who is this?
It's John Pulgeni, Madam Chair.
Yes, quickly?
Just quickly, because they brought up the direct abutters. The most impacted by this proposal would be 88 Theodore Parker Road, that is the wrecked property next to it, and that man spoke in support of this project.
Got it, so, can I have everybody muted, please? But, but for the board members, Ms. Ambassador and Mr. Pulgeni, the, the question about Mr. Farrar, I'm assuming that the projects that he did on Center Street, the Holy Name Projects, which I think a couple of us drive by fairly frequently, they look good, but I'm assuming that every process that he went through meets zoning code requirements?
100%, Madam Chair, and he's on this call, all those, they're all zoning compliant. It went through a zoning, obviously, process on some of them, but that is a zoning compliant project, there's no height violations, there's no violations.
Okay, so, given that information, may I have a motion from the board?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with VPDA designer view.
I'll second that, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 129-5685, 1999 Center Street. This is demolition of portions of an existing scene-
Oh, no, we will vote.
And redemising of an existing Walgreens space for a tenant improvement for outpatient medical clinic in addition of a shared vestibule for both tenants and rearranging the remaining Walgreens space. Violation is Article 56, Section 15, the use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please. Is anyone on for 1999 Center Street Walgreens?
I can maybe Mike. Mike, are you here for this project?
I am, good morning. Myself and Andrew Crook is, if you could un-
Okay, I see him, yep. Go ahead.
Whoever's here for this project, put your name and address on the record, and tell us what's being proposed.
Hi, this is Andrew Crook with Village MD. Our corporate offices are at 125 South Clark in Chicago, Illinois. I'm Senior Vice President. We're proposing installing a full-service primary care clinic within the existing parameters of the pad at this location. Village MD offers full-service primary care to all individuals ages 2 to 122, with regardless of insurance or sponsorship. We are a national organization across the country, and we're looking to expand into the Commonwealth with our model.
So, before, before we go any further, does Walgreens own this lot, or do they rent it out?
Michael, you can comment on this, I believe they, they, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I believe this is a, this is a leased facility that Walgreens leases from a landlord.
And we will be subletting it from, or leasing it from them.
Correct.
And what are your proposed hours of operation, same as Walgreens?
Yes, 7:00 AM to 7:00 P., 9 to 5, 7:00 AM to 7:00 P., Monday through Friday, 9 to 5 Saturday and Sunday. We're staffed with full-time medical doctors and doctors of osteopath. We have about eight to nine exam rooms, and we'll be bringing 15, approximately 15-plus jobs to this location.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no, no questions on the proposal, I think it makes sense to me. Just one question was, I don't believe there's any elevations, so there's no exterior changes you're proposing with this adjustment. I see there's windows, so, maybe not, I just wanted to confirm for the board.
That is correct, there are no exterior improvements associated with this.
And will there be additional signage to reference your company here, or how will that work?
Yeah, there will be, so we will go on the existing, if it's a monument or pylon sign, the, the existing panel, we will reconfigure that to include the Village Medical logo on it as the same width on the building to still fit within the code requirements, but the Walgreens would get, you know, a little smaller to allow for the Village Medical logo to be on there also.
Understood, okay, no further questions from me, thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Obviously, this is going to take up some space that is being used for other purposes currently. What, what will be lost in, in the transition?
Sure, Mr. Andrew Crook, I can handle this. Essentially, Walgreens will remove some of their less profitable items within their store. In other locations, that is included such things as frozen pizzas or chips. Think about it as if you had Trident, Dentine, and Orbitz cinnamon gum, they'll remove one of those three. Due to their rearrangement of the store, they are able to keep about 92% of their products. The other item is that they remove smokes and smokeless tobacco products when we come in, so that frees up quite a bit of space.
Okay, and then the more, the more important question is, what kind of medical services will be provided, and what is sort of the limitations that you set for yourself about what you won't do?
Yes, sir. So, we describe ourselves as full-service primary care. We, in essence, what that entails to us is that we see patients time and time again. We develop ourselves within the community, trying to hire from within the community. We've been working with the Benchmark Group and working with the economic development portion of the Commonwealth for the past year or so, so that's, that's number one. Number two, in terms of limitations, we generally do not see the kids below the age of two that are under the vaccination age and the immunization age, but everybody else above that. We participate in the Medicaid program, we have a sliding scale for individuals that have, aren't able to pay, and we abide by, fully by the IMTALA emergency requirements. But key is, is that we are offering, anybody can walk up or scheduled, it's, it's all the above across the board. We don't have radiology, we don't do imaging, but we have a limited service lab in the, in the building. But it's essentially a standard enhanced primary care offering.
So, and are you affiliated with any medical center? What do you, what do you do for referrals, for specialty issues, things beyond the PCP purview?
Yes, sir, and I'm biased, so I will say that the beauty of our model is that we're not beholden to any single one healthcare system. Therefore, if there's a convenient from a patient preference perspective, from geography, we allow them to go where they want, but we fully inform them and help them out with selecting what's best for their budget, their personal outcomes, and what their preferences are. So, we are free agent in, in that matter, and we're able to keep patient satisfaction and outcomes up quite high.
And do you accept mass health?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And then just a final question, I mean, with, Boston is famous for its pretty robust community health center program, much more than most other cities. Do you see yourselves competing with that, those operations, or, or different, or how would you compare what you want to do?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a valid question, we've, we've had the similar statements in other markets that we've entered. Specifically, we've partnered with federally qualified health center, healthcare centers and other markets. The model is different from CHCs or FQHCs from us. We try to keep the patients coming as many times as we possibly can, and we have a different financial model with the insurance companies, Medicare and Medicare Advantage. So, we can sit side-by-side with them. We're filling a gap, we believe, in the neighborhood where we avoid access to care issues. We don't see that as a competition, we see it as a different model that we can literally sit side-by-side or even partner with.
Thank you, so who is the, so Andrew, are you the local person, or is, is Mike the local person?
We're, we're both not local to Boston.
You're both, okay. Because there is an issue, it's been a long-term issue with the site plan and the screening and buffering, et cetera, et cetera, for that property. We know that it abuts a historic cemetery, and there's construction that's gone on on the other side of that cemetery. And we just want to make sure that whoever it is who holds the lease, since you will be subleasing, make sure that, in fact, everything as far as screening and buffering is met on this, on this site.
I think Mike, you can, Michael can take that note and ensure that there were, we're with that directly, and we have Patrick Bench and Joe Rule from Benchmark on the call who are local, and we'll make sure that that is, they're, they're going to slap our hands appropriately in representing everything that we need to do.
Joe, you're on? Yep, I see Joe Rule. Joe, you know, you know the neighborhood, so please make sure that they do their, they, they do everything they need to do to make sure that they are a stronger asset to the community. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jake Lacy from the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. This is project one through two, community meetings as well, with ONS on March 23rd, and then with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on April 19th, where the zoning committee voted 6-0 in support of the project. We have not received any letters of opposition, and at this time, we defer to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raise hands at the moment.
Um, let's see, Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, VPDA. We've recommended approval, but we were going to defer any design review to Parks because it does abut the historic cemetery, so I'm not sure that we need to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a moment, a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, I guess.
Is there a second?
Second, my first.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, it's now 10:33, I'm going to call the 10:30 cases for any deferrals or withdrawals, so if you are deferring a 10:30 case, you can give me the address first, please. Okay. Looks like we got to win it today. Calling the next case, calling DOA 122-8560, 40 Lake Street. This didn't convert a use of the property from a residential use to a community center for young adults and high cognitive autism spectrum disorder. The violation is Article 51, Section 8, community shall use is conditional. Article 51, Section 8, accessory personnel quarters are forbidden. And Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking and loading. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Peter Kohansky from Goldston and Stores, 400 Atlantic Avenue in Boston, here to represent the Common Room, which is the owner of the house at 40 Lake Street in Brighton. I'm joined by Tracy Stoll, who's the Executive Director of the Common Room, and by Tom Harrington, a board member, they can answer any questions.
Yes, so what I'd like you to do is to go directly into describing what is being proposed, and how this, this is a 1F 5,000 zoning district, and tell us again how this proposal is supportive of that zoning.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, Madam Chair. Let me just say a minute about the organization and the members that it serves, because I think-
I do think that from the, from the description, we know it's, it serves adults with high cognitive autism spectrum disorder, so we, we get it. So, please just go into the detail of the zoning and the proposal.
Great, so, the idea behind the house is that it would be a home-like environment for the members of the organization. It's a place for them to hang out, to participate with peers in small group activities. And we really think, actually, we, we know that this is a residential district, it's part of what the organization was looking for, to have a home-like setting for its members. And I can describe exactly the sort of uses that the organization plans to, plans to conduct. I know that ISD flagged this as a community center, this is not what most folks would think of as a community center use, so I want to get really specific about, about how it's going to be used. So, first of all, it's, it's not a residential facility for the Common Room's members. We are asking to maintain a residential unit on the third floor, which would be for caretakers of the house, to make sure that it's terrifically well cared for. The members would visit the house during the day and some evenings for small group activities. So, these are groups of four to six members at a time, all young adults. Activities are things like playing cards or other games, learning to cook, watching a movie together, conducting art projects or crafts projects, things like that. So, on any, on any given day, first of all, the, the organization, the, the Common Room would plans to be open five or six days a week, so Tuesday through Saturday is the current plan, and maybe with some activities on a Sunday. And then, they would conduct small group activities in time slots of about two to four hours each. So, the plan would be to have one activity slot in the morning, in a morning window, so four to six participants in the late morning and into the afternoon, maybe in a window of between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM in the afternoon.
So, tell us a couple of things that will possibly impact the neighborhood. I'm assuming that the participants will be driven in a van, or will they come independently?
They will, they will come independently, so these are, these are high-functioning young adults. They, not many of them have driver's license, driver's licenses. Of the 25 active members, I think eight have driver's licenses, and only about four say that they might drive to the house. The rest of them will arrive by public transportation, or by family drop-offs, or in some cases, probably by Ubers.
Okay, and then, how many staff people are you anticipating onsite at any given time, at, at maximum occupancy, I should ask?
Yeah, on, on the busiest day, I think there might be two or three staff members, more likely, one or two on most days. There will be only about, we, we expect about six to 10 members at any one time, there might be the four to six in a group activity, and there might be another two or three young people who are doing quiet activities like reading or hobby time.
Okay, so, given this information about drop-offs, pickups, and stop, tell us how parking is proposed to work?
Sure, so, currently, the site has parking, parking spaces sufficient for six cars without blocking, there's room for five- Um, there's room for s- five spaces in the back parking area. There's a driveway.
But please tell, so sorry, sorry, please tell us which um plan we should be looking at?
Sure, that's that's a good one to look at right there. So there's, there's one front parking space, which I'll get to in a minute if that's okay. And then there's this driveway um back into this back parking area. And in that back parking area, there's space for five um parking spaces. There's also a garage in the basement of the building. Um, and our thought that is that the the garage spaces would be dedicated to the caretakers, uh the one or two people living in in the house. The other five spaces would be open to staff and to members if they needed it. Um, and then there's that front
Yeah, tell us about the front yard parking, yep.
Yeah, the the front parking space is an existing parking space. Um, our proposal is to improve that so that it could accommodate, if necessary, a handicapped accessible vehicle and connect to an accessibility ramp um that's being designed. Um, so that, just to be clear, that the variance for front yard parking was not to add any additional front yard parking. It was, we were cited for that because we were improving that front space, um but it would not be to add any additional spaces in that in that front area.
Okay, so just to tell you clearly that this board generally does not approve front yard parking. Um, and given that Lake Street is a busy street and is impacted uh very much by BC and the BC students, um you know, we have uh some level of sympathy for the residents who live on Lake Street. Um, so um just to let you know about that, but the fact that you raised the handicap um the handicap access issue, um how is the building being um retrofitted in any proposed way from any other element on handicapped?
Yeah, so it it the the plans submitted um have it being fully, uh meeting all accessibility guidelines, there will be a new ramp to that entrance on Undine Road um to provide an accessible path into the building, and then bathrooms and the like and common areas are being um outfitted to be to be fully accessible.
And what was the prior use of this building?
It is uh zoned a- as we know as a as a single family. Um, we have reports and um we don't have a whole lot of information on this, that it was multiple units at different times, but it's, we're treating it entirely as a single family house, and that's, I know what the neighborhood uh prefers and expects.
Okay, um, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Uh, I think the plans are are generally fine. There seems to be, there is some interior, so the, just to confirm, the only the first floor will be made accessible, if I'm just making sure I understand that. The second floor will not, because I don't see any uh reference to a lift or anything of that nature. Is that correct?
I I I think that's correct.
Okay, and then um I guess my question, and I guess maybe this is, I should probably know this, but so the the this accessible parking is not off of Lake, it's actually off of the side street, but we're a corner lot, so that's two front yards, is that how we're, why we're, that's called, you were calling it front yard parking?
That that's right. ISD treats uh both yards as a front yard on this on this corner lot.
Yep, just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Yeah, yeah, to be specific, Mr. Robinson, the front door is on Lake Street, um so it is um, you know, for all intents and purposes, front yard parking.
Okay, um, so I I guess I I would like to hear Mr. D'Amico just check in on the parking, because I'm not sure if five cars work in that back lot, but other than that, I have no uh no real questions about the proposed uh.
Uh, Madam Chair, lady, and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. I would like to request that uh more detail be provided uh for the five parking spaces proposed, because um I don't see any detail. It's a general area, but the actual spaces are not uh, you know, uh outlined. And secondly, the uh front yard parking would be for handicap parking only. Uh, I think uh it makes sense, this is a curb cut already there, but it should be for handicap parking only.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition? And I'm going to um uh right away say that I will re- beyond the representatives of the elected officials, that uh we will hear from five individuals either in support or in oppositions, but five abutters. Please put your name and address on the record and please give us new information when you speak. Um, and if your comments and concerns have already been captured by a previous speaker, please put your name, just put your name and address on the record and tell us you're in support or in opposition, okay? Appreciate your uh your uh you are listening to these um these comments. So let's go, Ms. Ambassador.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgment to the board, background information on the community process. Our office held two abutters meetings. Uh, the first was on August twenty-sixth and the last one was on February seventh. Um, there were a number of residents who participated in both. Primary concerns that remain um have been uh questions about the pickup drop-off leading to congestion on the street. Um, there are no sidewalks on portions of Undine. Um, residents were quite concerned about that. There's also been iterated numerous times concerns about how many members might be using the space at a given time. Um, you know, residents want to ensure that it's it's not a high number, you know, there's been talks, but if sometimes if there's events, you know, it could be in the double digits. Uh, we received thirty letters of opposition and one letter of support, which we've made available to the board. Uh, the applicant also went on to the Brighton Austin Improvement Association and uh received an opposition vote from them as well. Uh, with that, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary, we have those letters as well.
Okay, any other left officials, we're gonna give testimony? Okay, I'm hearing none. I'll start with Jean Hopkins. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Hello, yes, I'm Jean Hopkins, and I am with WGBH. I'm um the community relations and communications person with WGBH. We're located in Brighton. Our offices and studios are at One Guest Street, and um I want to speak in support of the Common Room, recognize
So you are, you are speaking as a member of uh a local business? You're not a resident, are you? Are you a board member?
No, Brighton, um, WGBH is in Brighton.
Got it, so it's, so we got it. Okay, thank you. Can I hear from abutters to this project, please?
Uh, Bob D'Amico, can you go ahead?
No, Bob is, Bob is Secretary of
Jeff Carp, are you an abutter here?
I am not.
Okay.
But I would like to speak if possible.
Oh, all right, okay.
We want, we want to hear from abutters and then we'll come back to others.
Okay, Peter, uh, Kocinski, are you a director abutter?
Nope, I've been the presenter, sorry.
Oh, oh, sorry, can you lower your hand? Um, okay, I'll go to Ian.
I'd like to speak at a later time if possible.
Okay, uh, Sandy H., can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is C. Herwich, and I live at twenty-two Lake Street on the same side as forty. And I am a retired Boston Public School nurse, not that that actually matters. I am um on the fence about this project, uh leaning towards being uh opposed to it. Uh, my concern number one is um accessibility for possible employees, that the second and third floors are not being made uh accessible. Um, I am still unclear as to whether the front parking space is on Lake Street that will be the handicap spot or on Undine. Um, neither space uh really would support a parking spot. You would be removing either trees or shrubs, um several big trees to do that, and green space. And the five parking spots in the back really don't hold five cars. I've lived here for twenty years and I'm very familiar with the property. Um, I would like to uh proposers of this project be very specific about the hours of operation of the building um in terms of being open to their members.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Diane? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Diane Suketti. I live at seventy-six seventy-eight Kendrick Street in Brighton. I am not an abutter, but I live diagonal to the property, and I am um in strong support of this program. Um, I think that um in support of it, it's, you know, I think it's important to um eliminate barriers and create an environment that is inclusive to all, and I have toured the property. I have met with some of the people who will be running the program, and I feel that it will be a very well-run program, and I believe when they
Thank you, thank you.
Annabella, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes, uh, from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association. The BIA voted uh against this project. Um, I'm also an abutter. Uh, I would want Undine Road, and I'm representing over forty neighbors. Uh, we sent in a letter. Uh, they did give us a diagram with the proposed parking that they did not submit to the city, and that diagram shows them taking away the patio area and the grass area in the back, which doesn't give any movability for the vehicles in the back, and also is looming over the property below will cause drainage problems, and I just don't see how it would work. Uh, the city really needs to look at the parking, and the driveway is very narrow going up and down. It, I don't see how that works. Furthermore, um, Lake Street, uh forty Lake is on the corner of Undine. There is no sidewalks there. There is, the street at that corner is not wide enough for two cars to pass at the same time, so if I'm turning onto Undine to go home, I have to wait for someone coming from Undine to exit, so onto Lake Street for me to turn on. At the same time, there's pedestrians walking on the street because there's a cut through to Town Estates and Chamapawon area. They go to the train, they basically are forced to walk on private property. You'll see footsteps on on the private property, damaged property, all the time. Um, there's also a parking lot for eighteen cars for Town Estates on Undine. Uh, there is a condo with twenty parking spots on Undine that's in Newton, and there's access to Newton Calm in the back where golfers go down with golf things. It is a pedestrian bottleneck with cars and a drop-off.
Thank you.
All right, um, I think I went to Ian earlier. Are you looking to get testimony here?
Uh, let's get to Galvin Owens, and if this is Secretary Galvin, please um please be as concise as you can.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. I, William Galvin, forty-sixth Lake Street, a director abutter to this property. Minimally, I think this has to be deferred. Uh, the presentations that have been made both today and on previous occasions are inconsistent and often oftentimes contradictory. The parking issue is critical. It's not as much the use, although the use issue also is an issue because we're unclear how many large events are going to be held there. I've lived there directly abutting this property for forty years. I'm very, very close to it. I do not believe you can put that number of park, of vehicles behind it. Um, the absence of a direct plan that provides for that is a concern of mine. The issue, it's already been raised, but the possible runoff of water affects my property. It's directly below it at the back. Um, I just think this whole proposal has been very, the presenters have been very evasive in presenting the numbers of people, methods by which their members will get there. I think at this point minimally it's deferred. I think we start off not wanting to be opposed to the concept, but as one of the earliest speakers who actually lives on Lake Street said, uh, the absence of any specifics is a real problem. I, if this were a fraternity, we wouldn't even be thinking about or talking about. Uh, we don't treat it that way, but I think that this lack of specificity as to what is going to occur there, and most especially how the participants are going to get there and how they're going to be dropped off, even the Google lift issue is a problem. We frequently have vehicles outside idling their vehicles, waiting for pickups. It's a very busy street. Lake Street is only twenty-two feet wide, and as already noted, I think by the chair, because of the Boston College proximity, there is a serious problem in this profession just accessing it. And it's a major cut through from south to north. It's a one-way street. So for all those reasons, I would suggest at this point this be deferred until the parking department gets a chance to evaluate specifically what they're going to do, so there'll be some understanding with the new construction that's proposed, both the handicap ramp as well as the here, what effect it's gonna have on the abutting property, which is mine. Uh, I would appreciate that very much, so.
Thank you. Okay, so that that closes off comments. No, Mr. Strong, we we will, we will um close off comments. I need to hear from the um uh the attorney if there is any further points that they need to make.
Sure, um, as
Response to what you've heard.
Yes, absolutely. So um we have have tried to answer all the questions. We've tried to be as consistent as we can. It's a new use, so um some of this will develop. Um, as to the parking plan, uh, we have one developed. It's not part of the record. If the board defers, we can, we can submit that um and have that be part of the record uh the next time we are in front of you. We can also answer questions about about drainage. We can certainly make sure that's not an issue. Um, as to the specific parking and drop-off plan, I would just say, I would ask the board to keep in mind today or when we come back, um, there's a very, we expect a very limited number of vehicles. We also have the ability to stagger departure and arrival times, um, if it ends up being an issue. This is a close-knit organization. We can be very directive with the people participating in our activities, and um we we really hope that we can solve any of those problems uh should, in the unlikely event that they arise.
Okay, so
As a director abutter, I would like to speak. I didn't get an opportunity to speak.
No, no, I, you know what, Mr. Mast, can you close off everybody? Um, this is just um being very disrespectful of this board. Um, so um, given all this information, um, and I and I think one of the abutters said it very clearly that we we would want to have our best angels here on this project. However, on a, on a very operational basis, there seems to be a lot of questions and a lot of ways that the applicant has not really clearly communicated how they're going to address all these issues. So um, may I have a motion for deferral? And please give us a date so that um the applicant can have enough time to meet with the abutters and um and um and and really put pen to paper and um resolve issues here. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer?
Is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries the date, please.
Madam Chair, we can do August twenty-third if that gives them some time.
Yes, that's, let's do that.
August twenty-third at eleven-thirty.
Okay, and so this is a charge to you as the applicant to make sure that the drainage issue is not just hanging out there, that in fact that front yard parking is removed and it's accommodated elsewhere, and just, just give us, give the neighborhood the respect that they need to really respond and really respond to all these questions. Okay, thank you.
Calling the last case for ten thirty, calling DOA one three two two five two seven six forty-five Washington Street. This is a change of parking for a three-family to replace unit three with entry doors and new fire-rated doors. The violation is Article fifty-one, section eight, the use is forbidden, and Article fifty-one, section nine, the location of the main entrance to the new unit. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr., Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, I represent Jeffrey Block, the owner with his wife of six forty-five Washington Street in Brighton. Uh, the blocks do reside uh in this building. My clients originally purchased the property in August of two thousand thirteen. By the time they purchased the building, it was assessed as a two-family dwelling, but it was in fact a three-family and was listed, occupied and sold as such. The building has been assessed as a three-family dwelling since two thousand fourteen, uh just after the time my clients purchased it. The building jacket um is indeterminative. Uh, there is a nineteen seventy-two long-form application to legalize the occupancy as a three-family, which was for some reason subsequently abandoned, indicating that the building has in fact been used as a three-family for at least fifty years. Since this is a two F five thousand Since this is a 2F 5,000 zoning sub-district, variance is required for the use, which as I say, has been existing. There's also a cited violation for the location of the main entrance to the unit, which is in existing condition. This building benefits from pre-existing side yard parking. No work is to be done here aside from the installation of two new fire-rated doors serving unit three, the building whose occupancy is being confirmed, and that is a 1,283 square foot, two-bedroom unit. I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
And who, so this, this building has one, two, three, has six, eight bedrooms. Is, is this a rental or is this a condo?
No, two units are rented and my, my clients are owner occupants and they have been for the past nine years.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, very minimal work in terms of the, the project and, and the, the side entrance is in existing condition, so no, no questions on the proposal.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgment to the board. Our office held a butters meeting on March 14th. There were no concerns raised in that meeting. The applicant went on to the Brighton Austin Improvement Association and received their full support as well. With that, we leave it to the board. Thank you.
Good morning. This is Mara McCray from Council of Breeden's office. The council would like to go on record in supporting this project. Thanks.
Annabella, go ahead. Thank you. You lost, Annabella, can you hear?
Okay, yeah, I'm back on. Madam Chair, member of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
I have no additional remarks.
You have a motion, please?
Motion to approve of the PDA design in review.
Second? I'm sorry.
I don't need it.
I don't think we need it.
I don't need it.
Yeah, okay, so it's a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This board will, will take a 10-minute break and we will resume at 11:10. So the hearings, Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call just in case somebody didn't hear last time. Any deferrals or withdrawals to the 10:30 cases, so if you can give me the address? Okay. I'm first. Oops, sorry, go ahead.
I'm not sure if that was my call to action or if I'm the next one, but 43 Monmouth Street.
Yep, no, are you deferring? You moving forward on it?
I'm moving forward on it, thank you.
Okay, going to call it to the record right now. Calling case BOA 129-4842, 43 Monmouth Street. This is a change of occupancy to a three-family, the conversion of the third floor to a new unit. Violation is Article 53, Section 8, the three, three dwellings are forbidden. Article 53, Section 56, occupancy parking and loading insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself on this matter.
Who is this, Costa?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So please, Mr. Winkler, for your information, we now have a six-member board, so you need five members in support for your project to proceed. It, so decision is up to you whether to proceed today or to request a deferral for a full seven-member board.
May I ask why that just happened? Is that my right?
It might be that Mr. Mr. Ligarius knows you or is connected with some part of your, you know, your law firm or something like that, so.
I'm just a homeowner and there's no legal representation on the call.
Okay, so please, go ahead, go ahead. I mean, I'm assuming that you want to go ahead? Is that a right assumption?
Correct.
Okay, so please go ahead and tell us what you're proposing to do.
Hi there, my name is Colin Winkler and I am just trying to separate the second and third floor. I purchased it in 2015. It was listed as a five-bedroom apartment and I am proposing to convert the second floor into a two-bedroom apartment and the third floor into a single-bedroom penthouse, if you will.
So are you, first of all, you state here that this is an accessory dwelling unit that you're proposing?
That's actually incorrect. I had attempted to go that avenue and I was told that that was not an acceptable use of that program.
Okay.
So I'm looking for a change in occupancy.
Let's look at this then as a change of occupancy from, is it a two-family, two- or three-family?
That is correct, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Tell us, tell us how you propose to have this, to make this happen.
I'm a little confused. You mean logistically speaking?
So you're proposing to take a five-unit and turn it into a one-two bedroom and one-one bedroom?
That's correct. And so essentially the front staircase will be public to the beginning of the third floor, the, I guess, the second floor landing. And the third floor will be a standalone unit and the second floor would be a standalone unit.
So tell us-
And I'm not expanding the foundation or the home in any way on either of those floors.
So tell us the unit size of each one of the proposed units in the building?
So the first floor unit is slightly over 1,000 square feet. I think it's closer to 1,200. The second floor is just over 1,100 and the third floor is just over 800.
Okay. And then tell us how parking is proposed to be, proposed to be sited on this lot?
There is no room for parking. The home is already slightly over the FAR and it was, it was purchased that way. That wasn't my doing. So, you know, there is no space for parking on the lot. You know, I just, I think that moving from a five-bedroom to essentially three-bedroom, albeit two separate units, is kind of very reasonable or modest.
And do you have a sense of when this building was constructed?
1880, 1890.
Okay. Any occupancy proposed for the basement?
No, the ceiling height is not, not even close to what is necessary.
Because this board, this board is not in support of basement occupancy. Roof deck proposed or any decks proposed?
There is a roof deck. I've already been before this board for that development and that is underway. So the deck that is visible in that picture has already been approved by this committee.
And so this, when you came before us in the past, it was just for the roof deck or was it for that entire rear addition?
Just the roof deck.
It was just the roof deck, so you-
The addition existed when I purchased the home. I didn't mean to speak over you.
Okay, go ahead, okay, got it. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. No questions, really. There's no occupancy proposed. In the basement, everything looks pretty straightforward in terms of what the proposal is.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Venites with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted in the butters meeting for this project on March 9th of this year. There were concerns regarding density, parking, and construction noise. Although the abutters did state that the property was currently in a really bad condition. The applicant also met with Eagle Hill Civic Association in March and April, where the association suggested that this building is in need of, of a full restoration and that there are no high, that there's too much density in the area. So it should be a maximum of a two-family home. The association voted in opposition to the project. Twelve residents opposing, nine supporting. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
I'll start with Ellen and Mara. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Send a request to unmute you. Hi Ellen, can you hear us?
Me?
Oh, yeah, we can hear you now. Go ahead, can you state your name and address?
Hello, hello. Yes, my name is Jane Dean, D E A N.
Your address?
Forty-five Monmouth Street.
Okay. Now you support or opposition?
I oppose vehemently.
And please tell us what your opposition is based on?
My opposition is this, huh, this, 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 the deck that he just put on his, how awful.
Okay, thank you.
His, try to oppose this, affirm this.
Thank you. Ms. Ambassador, are there any other raised hands?
Well, no ma'am, thank you.
So Mr. Winkler, let me ask you a question. How, how has that construction of that deck gone? You observing all time, time constraints on construction, et cetera?
I am, I'm just curious. I didn't hear the objection at all. I was breaking up-
Can you, can you answer my question, please?
So your question was, am I observing the progress of the roof deck?
I mean, how is, are you working during the week, on the weekends? How is that going?
I mean, I, to my knowledge, the team is only working on the weekdays. They have not asked me if they could have a weekend permit, which would require people work with the city. Again, that's outside of the scope of this project, just to be clear.
And is this, is this an investment property for you?
This is my first home, I'm expecting to live in it. I have had a very long and arduous path to this point. It was purchased in 2015. There were six illegal encroachments, there was a landline dispute. There were structural issues with the foundation and the chimney that caved in. I have really...
Okay, we heard, we understand your woes. Okay, so can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
I'm grateful, thank you all.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 128-8536, 486 to 490 Bennington Street. This is new construction of a four-story, seven-unit building with a ground floor containing studio-style dwelling unit and six additional residential resides on the upper three floors, five indoor parking spaces. Violation is Article 53, Section 54, screening and buffering. Article 53, Section 56, off street parking insufficient. Article 27T-5, this is in East Boston I Park. Article 53, Section 12, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 12, the macro log height has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, the board may recall, this was, a different version of this was back before the board in September of last year. The board voted to deny the petition at that time. A number of comments were raised during the hearing, including the bulk of the building, the setback in the rear, the number of parking spaces, the number of overall units. Since then, we have modified this project to reduce it from the original proposed, there was nine units down to seven units. We've also done a 20% reduction in the gross floor area, reducing the intensity of the variance that's requested by FAR. We've also adjusted the parking, the interior parking from six spaces to five. As I said, we reduced the number of units from nine to seven. This is probably a good place to stop showing the previous versions of this proposal. As you can see on the right side, we do show a full 10-foot setback, which is compliant in the neighborhood shopping district. The proposed use of the seven-unit multifamily would be an allowed use in the NS District. The variance that we were requesting for rear yard last time had our building within about three feet of that rear property line. I believe Mr. Robinson had a specific issue with that, so we have made that modification to increase the rear setbacks.
So tell us about the, so tell us about your existing, your existing violations and tell us about the sizes of the units.
Sure, so with respect to the violations, while we do comply with lot size, lot width, frontage and side yard, the first violation would be the floor-to-air ratio. We are at 2.19, which would be above the 1.0 that is permissible in the NS District. 1.0 is pretty much the norm throughout the entire East Boston community, except for some of the commercial districts. However, we believe that the modifications of this project make this a much more harmonious proposal for the, for that corridor, which is Bennington Street, which is a main gateway up into Orient Heights. This site is also within, very short, within two-minute walking distance to Wood Island Tea Station. So although we are providing five parking spaces, this is literally steps from the entrance to a Blue Line Tea Station. In addition, our height...
So I'm sorry, so the access to your parking is through a garage? Is it indoor parking? Okay, got it.
That is correct.
Okay, so then...
And Mr. Zacherson is aware of the board's preference for a translucent door, so we understand that would likely be picked up in design review. What we're seeing here, Madam Chair, is the proposed parking layout.
Councilor, since you, since, since there seems to be a preponderance of garage doors in Easty, we'd love to see them incorporated in whatever is submitted to the board rather than rely that it will be picked up by the BPDA.
Understood, and I will pass it along to Mr. Zacherson, who does a lot for this board as well.
Okay, so talk about the height?
Sure, so our proposed overall height is a four-story building. There is no story limitation in the NS District, but there is a 35-foot height maximum. However, we believe that this proposed height is quite consistent with the planned East Boston study that is underway for boulevards and corridors, which we believe the BPDA is recommending an increase in height to four stories. And I don't want to speak for Mr. Hampton, I'll let him state what the BPDA's recommendation is with respect to this revised prior. The height of our building would be at 43 and a half feet, again, slightly above the 35-foot height limit that is permitted in the district currently under Article 53. With respect to screening and buffering, our butter on the rear as well as our left side is the First Party Credit Union. You do have a letter of support from that organization in support of...
Sorry, and those, so the top floor is setback with front decks. Tell us about the breakdown on the units?
Sure, so we have a studio at ground level with all generously-sized two-bedrooms on the upper levels. The two bedrooms range in size from anywhere about 985 square feet up to about 1,100 square feet. So again, they're all being generously-sized two-bedroom units.
And what's the size of the studio?
565 square feet.
And is this an elevator building?
I believe no, because we do have the ability to make that lower level adaptable.
So the, the lower level is going to be a 565-square-foot studio, okay? Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are, are good. You know, I think we see the history here and I think there has been some steps to reduce the scale and size of it and pull the rear yard back, as we've discussed. So really no more questions for the proponent on the update.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, who is the owner developer on this project?
Owner is MG2, Mr. Allen.
Is that the mayor group?
No, MG2 is a, you're saying the former mayor group?
Yeah.
I don't, because I don't believe the mayor group is in, around anywhere. MG2 is the successor.
Successor, but the same, the same organization.
I wasn't around for mayor group, so I don't know who was involved at that time. There are, I believe there are principals still involved.
You're lucky you weren't around for mayor group. They have a long and sordid history, so...
And hopefully the successor will, will improve on that reputation.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I can just add, I mean, MG2 group has done a number of projects in the East Boston community successfully and has done, been very successful in working with surrounding neighbors on projects in and around the area.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, I think Mr. D'Amico spoke on this one, I don't know if you want to get a comment?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. D'Amico, did you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, but D'Amico BTD, I just had a couple of comments. The maneuverability in the garage should be reduced from five to four because it's a little tight and maneuverability will be difficult. There's on-street parking, Wood Island Park is just across the street and so I don't think five spaces are necessary. And finally, there has to be an audio and video alarm because the entrance to the site and the exit of the site is right at the rear of the sidewalk. So pedestrians will not be aware of an oncoming vehicle, especially if they have a disability. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Benitez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted in the Butters meeting for this project in April of 2022. The Butters thought the design was great and that it would be a good fit to Bennington Street and the neighborhood. Some concerns about heights from one of the Butters. Project was also presented to the Harborview Neighborhood Association in early 2021, the first time around, where the association voted to oppose because of the height, number of units, and parking. The applicant met with the association once again in May 2022 to advise about the changes. Our office received a letter of opposition stating that the first floor should be used for retail space instead of living space. And at this moment, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have a few letters of support and letters of opposition as well.
Okay, and America number one, can you state your name and address for the record, please, once you're unmuted? Well, sir? Can you unmute yourself? I'll be having some connective issues there, but I have no additional raised hands.
Can you have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BB, I'm sorry, BPDA Design Review.
Is there a second?
Second, Ligarus.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 125-5931, 40 to 62 Franklin Street. This is requested to remove the proviso granted to the petitioner only at 58 Franklin Street. No work to be done. Violation Article 6, Section 4, other protectional conditions. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, just for the record, I was on mute, I was opposed to the last vote.
You were opposed? Okay. So let's let the record reflect that and that all the other board members, including myself, were in support.
Yep.
And Jim Ten is on for this, but there's also an interpreter. Tina, can you raise your hand? I'm not sure what you're on as, but I know that you're on. Jim Ten, can you, do you know what she's on under?
Uh, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, I know, he has an interpreter, I just, I'm not sure. Her name is Tina, but I don't see her, but I know, we've been talking, I know through email, I know she's here. Tina, can you hear us? Can you raise your hand? Oh, she's on under...
Uh, I just, yeah, tapped her, I think she, yeah, I hope she comes on.
Oh, I know she's on.
So let's in the meantime move to the next project, please?
Oh, yeah, she's here.
Okay, what's her name?
Tina is here.
Tina.
Tina, can you, can you state your name and address for the record?
Okay, there was, I think it's, is it Christina Clark?
Yes, hello.
Hello, yep, thank you.
Okay, so please, can you put your name and address on the record and the applicant's name and address on the record?
My name on the record, I'm, oh, do you mean to say I'm Christina Clark at 13 Meahan Street?
Are you here for Franklin Street?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, okay, while Ms. Ambassador sorts out the issue with Franklin Street, let us move on to the next project, which is 8H Street.
For the record, calling DOA 132-8550, 80H Street. This is a new roof deck, the violation is Article 68, Section 21, 29, roof structure restriction, and Article 68, Section 8, insufficient side job. Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, and John, are you here for H Street? Or Ivan?
Yes, yes, I am, yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead, yep.
Yes, my name is, for the record, John Winston, 80H Street, Unit 1, which is the unit that is right under Jonathan Berry, Unit 2, which is requesting the permit to build a roof deck.
Are you representing, are you representing the owner of Unit 2?
No, nope, I'm talking in support.
Okay, may I have a representative of Unit 2?
Say that again?
Do you know who might be the representative for Unit 2?
Uh, no, I don't, I would assume that he is on this call, however, someone.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ivan, hold on. Ivan. All right, Ivan, I just made you a panelist. Can you unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please?
You're not talking to me, or you are?
No, Ivan, yeah, go ahead, Ivan.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name is Ivan Hernandez. 111 Baker Street, West Roxbury, sorry about that. I, yeah, we had, actually, we're proposing a, we're proposing a roof deck on the, at 80H Street. It's, would be placed towards the back of the building, approximately 14 feet by 14 feet. Originally, this project had gone from the board with a proposal of an exterior stair, but there was opposition from the BPDA and they asked us if we could actually incorporate an interior stair, but access to the roof, which is what this revised set of drawings show. There would basically be an interior access through the roof hatch up to the roof and a small walk over to the deck. Deck is approximately 14 feet by 14 feet on the rear of the, the house, of the structure.
Hernandez, hold on a second. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are, plans are good. It is showing a roof deck, it's, you're not quite seeing the entire roof plan shown. It's just sort of a partial roof plan, but it seems pretty straightforward. And this setback, Mr. Hernandez, how far back is the actual roof deck from the front of the building? Can you just confirm?
It's approximately 25 to 30 feet back.
Okay, yep, I just want to make sure the board understood. Yep, that, no further questions.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office like to defer judgment to the board. We don't have a lot of notes on this, we're unaware of any concerns at this time, thank you.
Good morning, members of the chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition based on feedback from Neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association. Please note roof decks have presented quality of life issues for years prior to the pandemic in the, in the form of loud parties at all hours and trash removal. And these issues only became exacerbator over the last several years. Council President Flynn has heard these quality of life concerns regarding roof decks from our seniors, young families, and persons with disabilities, and he will continue to stand with the neighbors in opposition, thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have that letter from Gate of Heaven in opposition. We also have two other oppositions, one support.
Thank you. What is the opposition based on, Mr. Secretary?
Their opposition is, sorry, let me back to it. The roof deck. The roof deck, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please? Are there any more raised hands, Ms. Ambassador?
Yes, we do have a couple raised hands. John, go ahead, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is John Yetman, I reside at 538 East Fourth Street. I live within a half a block. I am in opposition of the roof deck as the neighborhood as a whole is. They are very disturbing at nighttime. Thank you.
Thank you, and...
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Councilor at Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Due to the Article 68 violations as well as the roof deck opposition, councilor, I'm recon opposition.
And John, go ahead, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is John Winston, 80H Street, Unit 1. And we are in support of the, of the roof deck. It is in our building, we fully expected a roof deck from the day it was rehab gold, the unit deed...
the unit deed, master deed, it's on file.
Thank you. John, thank you so much. Um, anybody else? Okay, given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
Can I just ask one follow-up question? Is, is the upper unit owner occupied?
Yes, yes, it is.
So this is, this is for the actual owner?
This, exactly, this is for the actual owner. Hey.
You may have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed, Eric.
I'm opposed, Jean.
Um, so, five, there are still five in support, so the motion carries. So it's been denied.
Very well.
Are we going back?
And then let's, let's.
Are they ready, Madam Chair? Franklin Street?
Yeah, they, they're on the call, they're on the phone. Tina, can you hear us? I'm not sure which one.
So let's keep going, please, give you, Ms. Ambassador, time to sort that out, okay? Let's keep going, Mr. Fortune.
Calling your next case, calling DOA 113-1575-804-E7 Street. This is a convert existing retirement home to 21 residential units, exterior rescan, create parking garage entirely with the existing building, create handicap lift, create a curb cut for garage entry. The violation is Article 68, Section 33, off street parking is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the lot area for additional dwelling units insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, usable open spaces insufficient, and Article 68, Section 33, off street loading is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is George Marancy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Christopher Anderson and Stephen Niosi in conjunction with Rise Construction. This is an application for the adaptive reuse of a former nursing home located at 804 East 7th Street in South Boston City Point neighborhood. Architectural services are provided by M Bark Studios, and Stephen Regal and Carlos Ribeiro from M Bark are with us this morning. This is an Article 80 small project, which was approved by the BRA board on February 10, 2022. The site is an existing former nursing home building situated on a lot of approximately 17,500 square feet. The building is three stories on its East 7th Street frontage, and owing to a natural grade change, two stories on its East 6th Street frontage, as this is a block through lot. The existing building's volume and massing will not be increased, rather, the existing building's height and volume will all be preserved, with its facades and architectural details updated and improved, thus minimizing any construction activities and impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. The former nursing home building's square footage will be converted to 21 residential condominium units, with 21 off-street parking spaces, 21 residential bike spaces, plus guest bicycle parking. The building's garage will be accessed on the East 6th Street side of the site, where there is an existing curb cut that will be slightly relocated, it will be a 10-foot curb cut providing access to the interior garage. In terms of unit composition, proposed are nine one-bedroom units, ranging from approximately 650 to 731 square feet, 10 two-bedroom units, averaging approximately 1,000 square feet, and two three-bedroom units of approximately 1,110 square feet. While the maximum FAR here under zoning is 2.0, the proposed FAR is 1.4. Exterior changes to the building are all aesthetic in nature, with no changes to the building's volume. The zoning district is MFR, multifamily residential, and there are four cited zoning violations. Off-street parking is insufficient, under Article 68, one off-street space is required for each new studio or one-bedroom unit, with proposed mix of unit types, 27 off-street parking spaces would be required here by code, proposed is a ratio of 1 to 1, one space per unit. The lot area for the number of proposed dwelling units is insufficient, for 21 units in this MFR zoning sub-district, a lot size of 22,000 square feet is required under the code, this lot is, as I said, 17,500 square feet. We have an existing condition of the present building, which is simply being adapted by a low-impact residential reconfiguration, in an attempt to minimize the zoning violations attributable to any reuse of the structure. The building is not being expanded. There is a cited violation, violation of insufficient usable open space, owing to concerns in South Boston and elsewhere in the city about roof decks, as we just saw in the previous hearing, no roof deck space at all is being proposed. I do point out that the site is located directly across from Carson Beach, and, and the Sugar Bowl, and right around the corner from Marine Park, in terms of usable open space readily available in the area. The, there are small existing second-story balconies on, on, or third story, depending upon how the building is viewed, on one side of the building, those are existing balconies that are being preserved, they used to serve the individual nursing homerooms on that side of the building, they will now be essentially cut in half, there'll be one balcony for a two-bedroom unit, one balcony for another adjacent two-bedroom unit, and those are the only units that will have access to those balconies. Finally, there's a cited violation for an off-street loading insufficiency, while there's no dedicated identified interior loading area, there is off-street area on the East 6th Street side of the building, within the building, which could be made available for the temporary loading and offloading of motor vehicles, particularly moving vehicles, particularly within the context of this being a condominium unit building rather than a rental building, with the presumed lower frequency of unit turnover. Finally, there will be three IDP units, a one-bedroom unit, a two-bedroom unit, and a three-bedroom unit. With that, Madam Chair, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, um, interesting building, I've never seen this before, but one question just on accessibility, counselor, so the building is split because of the elevation, so is there accessibility on the two street levels on East 6th and 7th? I see, it looks like you're, there's a ramp being brought into on the lower level, I just want to make sure that there is accessibility in the building, because there's no elevator, if I'm correct.
Sure, yeah, on, on the East 7th Street side, there is direct accessibility at ground level. Originally, there had been a proposed lift, which was referenced in the, in the permit application language. BPDA required full at-grade accessibility for the main entrance on the East 7th Street side. On the East 6th Street side, grade level is second-floor plans, which is simply garage entrance, but there is an at-grade door there, which would enter the garage, and you can actually cut through stacking system, and that provides entrance, would put you on the second floor of the building. There's also an elevator in the building, as, as well as two staircases, which, which obviously are not for handicap access.
Okay, so I didn't realize there was, I didn't see the elevator being proposed, but okay, so.
Yeah, it's not called out, Mr. Robinson, but looking at the floor plans, at the, in the top center, you can see a residential elevator.
Okay. And then, just sort of the exterior changes, it looks like part of that is actually the accommodation of the accessible entrance on?
That, yes, that is correct. Originally, there had been a ramp system going up to a side entrance, which was deemed unacceptable for good reasons, so that the, the front entrance of the building was redesigned to, as I say, provide, provide for accessible access with, with an East 7th Street facing door and entry vestibule.
Thank you. No further questions.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. This did go through a small project review with BPDA involving two public meetings, and it was approved by the BPDA board on February 10th. With that, we defer back to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam of the chair members of the board, Anna Calderon from Council President's Flink's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on a trough community process and compromises made by the team with the neighbors on both the number and composition of the units, the design, parking ratio, and other quality of life concerns. Previous interactions of the project were 31 units and then 25 units made of a studio bedroom. The community process substantially resulted in 21 units, with 21 parking spaces, and a mix of one, two, and three bathroom units, as well as allowing for more opportunity for families to apply for affordable units in the inclusionary development program. The proponent also made changes to a more traditional design based on community process. Council President Flink respectfully requests that the team continue to work closely with the neighborhood during the construction phase and on any quality of life issues or concerns. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, I do have two letters of opposition.
I have two raised hands, I'll start with Rob, Robin, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hello, Rob, my name's Robin Adams. I direct a butter one building to the left. I, I live at 794 East 7th Street, Unit G. I'm speaking on behalf of our entire condo association, it's 13 units. And though, I believe, though, a few concerns that we have, we're opposed to the parking being an exception, we think there should be, there's ample room to do 27 required spots and meet code, if there were 31 spots originally proposed, so that seems like.
So are you in support generally of this project? However, your, your.
In general, yes.
Caveat is that you would prefer increased parking?
Yes, and one of our concerns is the robotic parking, and we think that in practice, the, most of the new residents will park on the street, and maybe in the winter, or for long-term, use the robotic, but for convenience, it's going to add a great number of cars to the street, and the, the curb cut is taking away a street spot, and there's a couple, it looked like there was a proposed, proposal to the island that's taking away a few more street spots, so it kind of compounds not meeting the zoning requirement and reducing already tight street spots.
Thank you.
All right, Teresa, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Teresa Bonato, I live at 871 East Broadway, I'm the secretary of the South Boston Neighborhood Association. And on their behalf, I'm speaking in opposition to the project, for the same reasons, parking, traffic, density. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyra?
Hi, my name's Kyra Davis, I live at 794 East 7th Street, Unit E, and I'm two doors down from the project. I would like to make known that I oppose the project because of the parking situation and the type of parking that is being implemented here, in terms of the use of lifts, as opposed of just, you know, normal, normal parking spaces, otherwise supportive of them developing the structure and bringing life back to that, that building that's been shuttered for, for a while.
Thank you.
Jeremy Carter, go ahead.
Jeremy Carter, I also am at 794 East 7th Street. I oppose strictly due to the parking, as previously stated as well. Seems as though the number of one-bedrooms has dropped down, that was my initial opposition, but I think this is another point of contention that needs to be fixed as well, because if I'm them, I'm not going to wait for my robotic parking spot to come down, I'm going to park the street, and there's already not enough parking spots, and the congestion's pretty bad. We also have a lot of young children around here, so we want to limit the amount of people coming through as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Marancy, any, can you clarify the parking, the parking payout and things like that?
Yeah, yes, Madam Chair, thank you, George Marancy. The parking is a one-to-one ratio, frankly, amount of off-street parking.
I think I, the question I basically have for you is, the question about the island, is that, is that something that you are involved with, or is it that part of street design?
It's, so the, I, I think what's being, I don't know if members of the board are, are viewing the site in, in Google, but there is a striped, I, I believe this is what it's in reference to, there's, there's a striped no parking area at, at essentially the intersection between, at, at the point in front of the building on the East 7th Street side. This area is part of our Article 80 commitment with the BPDA, my clients will be responsible for public infrastructure improvements in this area, in terms of signalization, new crosswalks. It's undetermined what's going to happen to that area, where parking is currently not allowed, whether there might be extension of green space there, that's not something that, that we, meaning my clients and the development team, are proposing. We are in fact responding to both the BPDA, Boston Transportation Department, and I assume eventually the Parks Department, and Public Works, PIC, as to what is going to occur on the East 7th Street side frontage with respect to those public realm improvements.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. So, so basically, before this board, we have the reuse of the building to 21 units, condos, 21 condos, 21 parking spots, and three IDP units. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, it's now 11:55, I'm going to call you 11:30, any deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30?
Yes, Mr. Secretary of 69, 69 Saratoga Street?
Sure, thank you. Calling DOA 116-0061, 69 Saratoga Street. Name and address.
Wait, what? Because what about 4068 to Franklin?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Small, Business Adjutor, 51 Dobson Road. With regard to 69 Saratoga Street, we are here seeking a deferral of the case.
And for what reason? Is this your second deferral?
It is, Madam Chair. Last time, there was a mix-up with regard to the citation. We were cited for groundwater late after the original refusal letter had been issued and we had appeared before this board, and currently, we are working with the engineers and Boston Water and Sewer to get the approvals and square away issues of routing.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for a deferral.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
Uh, Mr. Small, would it be beneficial for a later date in August, or can we get you in on July 26 at 11:30?
Later date, later date in August would be fine, Mr.
All right, so we'll do August 23 at 11:30.
Okay, thank you so much, have a good day.
Thank you.
And Mr. Fortune, Attorney John Polgeny, on behalf of Fort Cherokee Street in Mission Hill.
All right, thank you, John. In regards to DOA 128-9454, Fort Cherokee Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney John Polgeny, 10 Forbes Road in Branch, on behalf of the applicant for Fort Cherokee, they were seeking a deferral, this was initially assigned to the subcommittee incorrectly, and then was put into the, the, obviously, the full zoning board of appeal. We have, we're waiting for an updated refusal letter from ISD, so that's the reason for the request.
Motion for a deferral.
I'll second, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair, I'm just recusing myself of this.
And this is Costa, um, um, date, please?
July 26 at 11:30.
Thank you, everybody.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the rediscussion at 11:30?
Mr. Fortune, 85 Mount Pleasant Avenue.
Thank you, case DOA 128-5330, 85 Mount Pleasant Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, 75 Arlington Street, Boston. On behalf of the applicant, a request to withdraw, this matter is being made.
Make a motion for denial, without prejudice.
Care a second?
I'll second that, licorice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the rediscussion at 11:30?
I see that there's a request for a re-deferral for 1472 in 1472 Center.
I just unmuted, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Hold on two seconds, calling case DOA 127-3426, 1472 Center Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Shane Losi with Chuen Company Architects, 1 Billings Road, Quincy, Mass.
And this is your second request for a deferral?
Uh, yes, we're looking. Yes, we're looking for a little more time in terms of coordinating the civil aspects that the community report for.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Thank you, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
We'll have a date of July 26 at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, is it 26 to 23?
Did I mess up?
I don't know. I might have messed up in my note taken.
It's the 26, Madam Chair.
26, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other more, are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30 rediscussions? There are none, I'll go back to the 10:30s. Calling BOA 131-0423, 202 West First Street. This is construction of a new five, four-story office and research building with parking. The violation is Article 68, Section 29. The maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Through structural restrictions, Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking insufficient. Article 68, Section 34, traffic visibility across the corner lot. Article 68, Section 14, excessive FAR. Article 68, Section 14, excessive height. Article 68, Section 14, front yard setback. Article 68, Section 31, screening and buffering. Article 68, Section 34, corner lots and two front yards. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking and loading insufficient parking. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, excuse me, council, sorry. I'll be recusing myself on this matter.
Madam Chair, I'll have to recuse myself as well, Eric.
Okay, given that we have two members short, I would prefer to defer this to a date when we have a full board. So may I have a motion and a date, please?
Make a motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
Well, it's going to be tough for me to give you the date, but we'll throw one out there.
Do we need a date when Costa is not sitting?
Correct.
You also need a date when Erica is not sitting and Hansi is sitting.
Yeah.
If I may, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry?
I just wanted to ask if, if I may speak as to the timeliness of this?
You may, but I just want to make sure that you have a-
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I will not be present on July 26. Hansi will be sitting, as of right now, July 12.
Okay, is it possible for you guys to switch dates, Eric?
Yes, well, I need to talk to Hansi, but yes.
Okay, okay. Because, because in the meantime, then, at least we all have possibly Mark doing the reviews, okay? So there's a motion for deferral. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the date is 7/26 at 11:30.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 129-5158, 220 to 230 Columbia Road. This is a move proviso from the previous owner. Change occupancy from a pizza shop to a restaurant with takeout. Violation to Article 7, Section 4, other protectional conditions. Name and address for the record, please. Anybody on for Columbia Road?
Hi, Kane, is that you? I, I sent a request to unmute you, but I know you spoke earlier.
No, that wasn't me, sorry.
All right, we'll come back to it.
And Franklin Street is ready as well.
All right, we'll, we'll go back to Franklin Street. For the record, calling BOA 125-5931, 40 to 62 Franklin Street. Just write it back into the record here. This is a permit being requested, move the proviso granted to the petitioner only at 58 Franklin Street. No work to be done, the violation to Article 6, Section 4, other protectional conditions. Name and address for the record, please.
Can I send a request to unmute you?
Yeah, my name is Jintan Ning. So I'm the new owners, just want to, trying, yeah, just want to take over the, you know,
Oh, hold on, Ambassador, can you mute everybody, please?
Yeah. Okay, there you go, thank you.
Okay, and may I have Tina on, please? Because she looks like she's still mute, muted.
Tina, can you hear us? Are you still on Jason's other second phone? Okay, I think he's, she's on a different line, but we can go ahead with, with Jason.
So, so first of all, what is the proposed name of the restaurant?
The name of the restaurant called Avana Sushi.
Okay, and have you had experience with takeout in the city of Boston?
I have experience over a decade, yes.
Where?
在哪有经验? I have experience back in Chinatown and also in Reading, Massachusetts. And I have been doing business for the past year at this new loca- location.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine. There's no proposed changes, so no questions from me.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, good afternoon, this is Chu Lan Hong from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. A butter's meeting was held for this on, on March 31st. There were no concerns from the butters, to my knowledge. At this time, we would like to defer to the board.
Should this be approved? Can you work very closely with the applicant so that they understand the takeout language in the city of Boston, which is different from Reading? Okay, thank you. Is anybody else, any other raised hands, Miss Ambassador?
Jose, are you here to give testimony for this proposal?
No, I was, I'm from 230, I mean, 220 to 230 Columbia Road. I was, I was muted for some reason.
We'll, we'll get back to you. We're, we're on a different case.
Go ahead, please.
We have no additional raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with usual takeout language for this applicant only.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 129-5158, 220 to 230 Columbia Road.
Okay, Jason，我过后给你发个短信，okay? Thank you very much.
I can follow up with mail. Thank you.
This is a proviso from the previous owner. Change of occupancy from a pizza shop to a restaurant with takeout. The violation is Article 7, Section 4, other protectional conditions. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Rojas, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
My name is Jose Rojas. Address is 220, I mean, specifically 224 Columbia Road. And I'm here to remove the proviso. I've had the abutters meeting on March 2, 2022, and a sustainable development committee on April 20.
What is the proposed name of your restaurant?
The proposed name is La Familia Kitchen. It was previously a pizza shop and now it's going to be a takeout restaurant.
Okay, and do you have experience with takeout in the city of Boston?
Yes, ma'am, very much so. My parents owned Delicia's over at Stone Street in Dorchester, and I've worked there throughout my life.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no questions and no changes.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. As the applicant mentioned, we had an abutters meeting through ONS back in March. We also received a letter of support from Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative. With that, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve usual takeout language for this applicant only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 132-7633, 51 to 53 Walk Hill Street. This is to change from a one-family to administrative office to a three-family. Violation to Article 55, Section 55-40, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 55, Section 8, proposed three-family use is forbidden. Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 55, Section 9, side yards insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, front yards insufficient. And Article 55, Section 9, the useful open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the Business Architects of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the applicant, Blarina Adrezi, on 51-53 Walk Hill Street. And I also have Devon Riley Marini from Chu as the architects on the project. As was mentioned, we're seeking to change the occupancy of the building from a one-family and administrative offices to a three-unit residential condominium building with three rear parking spaces accessed through a driveway and the existing driveway on the right side of the building. We're also proposing to completely gut renovate the building and add a dormer to match the right dormer that's existing now on the top, making that top floor a unit. Just to go over the, the layout of the, of the plan. The basement will remain as common unfinished basement and storage area. The first floor would house the main entrance that would lead to Unit 1, which would be a 1,036 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath with a rear deck. Going up to the second floor, which would house Unit 2, we're proposing a 1,127 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath with a rear deck. And then finally, Unit 3, which right now does have an unfinished area. It also has a bedroom and a bathroom up there, which was connected to the second floor. We're proposing that unit would be 1,054 square feet, two-bedroom, two-bath, and would also house the new dormer, which is 33 feet 10 inches, to match the exact size of the dormer on the right of the building.
So I, I have a couple of questions. This is a 1F 4,000 district. And you're, and you're proposing to convert a one-family and office through, to a three-family. And in addition to adding a dormer. Can you tell us how this will, tell us what the side yard is, that's required? And what are you proposing? Because we've been seeing some projects coming through where because of the lack of side yard, the abutters are completely shadowed out. And tell us about the building height, because it's obviously exceeding the number of stories.
Correct, Madam Chair. So we already have a dormer on one half. So because we're matching that on the left-hand side, it brings us to the full three-story. But we are at 35 feet, which is common up and down this area. And just to note, there are threes all to the left of us. There's one, two to the right of us. But there is composition of all threes and twos in this area, even though it's labeled as a 1F. The side yard that you had asked, on the left side, we're six feet 9 inches from the property line. And to the right, nine feet 1 inch. But we have a shared driveway with our neighbor that has another 10 and a half feet to their building.
And so on the left side, what's the required side yard?
It's 10 feet.
It's 10 feet?
But it's, this isn't existing, right? So we're not, we're not building-
So the, the dormer on the side that has the six feet 9 inches is the existing dormer?
No, it's the right side. It's the existing dormer.
Okay, so, so in essence, the left side is the one that is, that is-
Correct.
impinging on the side yard, okay? And then, so you have three feet 35, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine, just, I, I guess, just a concern about the parking in the back to ensure that we have proper screening and buffering. And the shared driveway is wide, so maybe there's some looking at that as well. But no other questions on the proposed storm. I think it's pretty straightforward. It doesn't extend out past the, the edge of the roof and it's consistent with the, some of the other buildings in the-
And if my memory, and if my memory serves me right, is there no parking? Or is this resident parking on this side of Walk Hill?
That I don't know, Madam Chair. I thought it was resident parking.
Yeah, I think it might be resident parking. Okay, any-
It's, it's marked resident park.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board?
Is, is there an easement on the shared driveway?
Yes, Mr. Alec. So us and the neighbor both have the use of both access only. And then this brings us to the rear of the property. Right now, there's an existing garage back there. It's antiquated. It's not even structurally sound. There's two very small spaces that don't work. We'll take that down and we'll add the third. These are all full spaces, so they're nine feet by 20.
And what's required on, on parking, for parking?
So it's, it's, it's one per, so it would be two additional spaces for the new units. We have three totals. We do, we do have a parking violation still.
So the parking violation is a short one or short two?
One.
Okay.
It's a very large shared driveway. Does the easement specify how snow removal is handled, paid for?
It does not. It's, I mean, the building is in existence now, although it's, it's not habitable just because of the condition, so it's always been used. It doesn't, but, you know, we would, it's, it's pretty clear that our half is the nine feet 1 inch. So we would, you know, we would be responsible. It's a condo building directly next to us, so it's recently renovated. So I have to assume they also would have a management company.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tiffany Caballero here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting for this project proposal was facilitated by our office on Tuesday, March 29. And on record, I have two letters of support. Additionally, the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council approved this proposal. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
If you're all set, I have no additional raised hands.
Mad, yes, Madam Chair, I'm sorry about that. We do have two letters of support.
Mr. Hampton, any comment from the BPDA?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommended approval with design review for any exterior changes.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review, also looking at the screening and buffering of the parking, as well as any exterior changes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Very much, Madam Chair.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 132-7640, 132 Chestnut Hill Avenue. This is change occupancy from a restaurant. The violation is Article 51, Section 16, the use is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please. Is anybody on for Chestnut Hill Avenue?
I, I believe he's on as, as an attendee, Ahmed Gary.
Ahmed, you said?
Yes, Ahmed Gary.
Looking for a panelist now, Ahmed. When you are made a panelist, you can just unmute yourself so we can move forward with the case. Okay. Okay. Ahmed, go ahead, can you hear us? Can you speak?
Can you just go on to the next case and come back to this once all the technical issues are resolved?
Ahmed, he's unmuted now.
He's unmuted? Okay, let's go for it, then.
He is unmuted, but maybe having some difficulties there. Can you hear us? Not sure what's going on.
Mr. Fortune, can we go to the next project, please?
Calling your next case, calling DOA 128-1800, 140 to 144 Harvard Avenue. This is a change of occupancy to a cannabis establishment, violation of Article 51, Section 16. Cannabis retail store use is conditional, and Article 51, Section 16, cannabis establishment location shall be sighted at least one-half mile or 2,640 feet from another existing cannabis establishment. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Mike Ross from the law firm of Prince Lobel, One International Place, on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is a social equity applicant, and the owner is a lifelong resident of Boston. What I wanted to do, Madam Chair, is talk about the conditional use first and then do the buffer after, if that's okay.
Yes, please, give us the detail. Yes, let's go for it.
All right. This is a good slide to start with here. What you're looking at is about 4,200 square foot, it's all on one floor, coming right off of Harvard Avenue on your left.
So hold on, let's hold on for a second. Is this a CC1 district?
CC1, that's correct.
It is CC1, okay, so it's a community commercial. And where's... What's the... What's abutting it?
So on the left, you have a small retail, on the right, you have retail, and there's a driveway kind of to the left there to get to the rear of the facility.
Okay, so go ahead, talk us through the...
Yep, Madam Ambassador, we can go back to the first slide really quickly. So what you're looking at there is about 2,100 square feet of public space. In addition, there's a 650 square foot queuing area to the front, off, right off of Harvard Ave. There'll be... There are six point-of-sale stations, with the top one being ADA compliant. There will be three ID checks, so a security guard will be standing in that alcove on the left, right off of Harvard Ave. The second ID check would be at that desk there, in the queuing area. And then the third would be at the point-of-sale, so that would be your third ID check. If you go to page three, it'll show you how deliveries... It's a site plan, so I can show you how the deliveries work. One more, please. I'm sorry, page four, sorry, Madam Ambassador, one more. There you go. So off the rear, you could zoom into the rear a little bit. What you see here are nine employee parking spaces. We're going to make this available to our employees because of that tight alleyway there. We think that's easiest and best in terms of letting people get in and out. So there'll be nine spaces there for our employee. There's a dedicated space for the delivery of product. There's also bicycle space back there, as well as the front of the building, where there's also bicycle that we will be providing. Page three, the one before this, will show you kind of the overall parking window here. If you zoom out just a little bit... So what we've done, in the green parking lot, which is right across the street from us, we've rented 10 dedicated parking spaces. So those will always be available for this facility. It's a two-minute walk to the facility. We'll advertise that, we'll make that known to our clients, many will be repeat, and they'll know that this is where they can park and have 10 parking spaces. The red is just the municipal parking lot.
Let's hold off. Who owns that parking space? And is that considered ancillary parking? In other words, will it be in their deed that this is going to be rented to your facility?
No, we could make it a condition, like a provider. You've done that in the past, Madam Chair, but since we're not requiring... Since we're not required to have parking at this site, it doesn't require... It is not deemed to be ancillary parking. We're doing this over and above.
Okay, so who owns that parking lot? Is that the city site?
No, the green parking lot is privately owned.
Okay, got it.
And we're into a lease with that.
Okay, so go ahead. Sorry.
No problem. And the red, that is city-owned, that's a 60 parking space municipal lot. Just pointing that out, just so you can see that there is parking there, but I think the important takeaway here is that we have nine employee spaces and 10 customer spaces all in. I wanted to talk about the buffer zone really quickly. We've... You know, often the board's asking why, what justifies it. We have four key reasons: demand, density, parking, and public need. And just one sentence, Madam Chair, for each one of those things. For demand, this, I think, is the highest or the third-highest precinct in the city in 2016, voting for cannabis. 84% voted for cannabis in this precinct, above 63, which the city had as an average. Density, this is the 18th most dense kilometer out of 200 kilometers in Boston. That's a Boston Magazine stat. It's a very dense area. Parking and transit, I've mentioned the parking, there's also MBTA lines, the green, as well as bus lines in the area. And public need is the last, Madam Chair. There are nine bars and restaurants, there's five retail package stores in this immediate area, there are eight coffee shops in this immediate area. There is a demand to fill this and the nearby cannabis establishment as well. I would just...
The next closest one is a block over just across the Brookline.
The next closest one was 4. It's 250, it's 116 Harvard Ave. You... I think they were in front of you in April.
Yeah.
They're 250 feet away from you, away from us. So it's close, but I would respectfully submit, Madam Chair, that competition should not be a considerate... Or potential competition should not be a consideration in terms of what the board's factors, of the other ones that I mentioned. Only final thing to say is that the hours of operations at 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. And I can pause there and answer any questions.
Monday through Sunday, so seven days a week operation, 9 to 9.
Yeah, it never came up as a, you know, to change that, so we propose 9 to 9.
Okay. And we know there's a high density of young people in the 21-plus age range in proximity. Okay. And how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine.
Any question?
No, none from me.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, just what are the buffer zone violations, what's proximity?
Yeah, so we have a couple in this area, in this immediate area. There's one at 116 Harvard Ave, which I mentioned is to the north of this plan, as I mentioned, was before you in April. That's about 250 feet away, Mr. Ehrlich. There's also across the street from Commonwealth Avenue, Mayflower Medicinals, you may remember, came before you a little bit ago. They are just around 500 feet.
Sorry, I don't remember the one on Com Ave, what's the address?
It's not on Com Ave, it's... Mayflower Medicinals is in the 200 block of Harvard Ave, it's right near the Brookline.
230 Harvard Ave, Madam Chair.
230 Harvard?
Thank you, Mr. Leggers.
And that's...
Right near the Brookline border.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Just, is Mayflower medical only?
Mayflower is medical. They have applied for their adult use to be co-located in that site.
Got it.
You know, one thing we didn't mention, but you kind of raised it indirectly there, Mr. Leggers, is everyone will be carrying... Most everyone will be carrying different products, so what's available at one location may never be available at one of the other locations. It's not like it's just you go in to buy, you know, cannabis. Cannabis is so specific at each one of these locations that each one will have its own demographic and market and interest, depending on what they're doing. We have a proprietary blend that's from, called Dr. Green Thumbs, which is very well-regarded and very well-sought after, and it would only be available at this location in this area.
Thank you. Let's just see, so we got questions. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal? And again, I'm going to hear from... I'm going to hear from five people. I want to hear from elected officials or representative from elected officials. And then I want to hear from five people, and I would like those five people to be residents of the neighborhood, so that will be my preference. So whoever is not a resident for the neighborhood, because I see a lot of hands popped up, can you lower your hands, please? Okay? So, Ms. Ambassador, please help.
Okay, you guys ready? All right, I will start with...
So, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. There was a lengthy community process on this. We had our first public meeting on January 24th. There were some disruptions that meeting, so the Cannabis Board asked us to hold an additional meeting on March 31st. We heard a variety of opinions. Some residents were excited to see something coming into a longtime vacant storefront. Other residents were impressed with their commitments to helping the local businesses deal with the graffiti problem in the neighborhood, as well as commitments to the arts. Other residents were worried about an oversaturation of marijuana dispensaries in this particular area, citing the buffer zone conflicts. And they also went on to the Austin Civic Association and the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. I don't believe either organization took a stance, because there was also an application, similar application going on roughly the same time within the block radius. They did receive support from State Representative Mike Moran's office, and I believe they also received support from State Representative Kevin Honan's office as well. With that information, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have letters of support and opposition, and we do have those letters that Connor spoke of.
Okay, go ahead, Jen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jennifer McLeory. I work for State Representative Michael Moran. Ret Moran's been very involved in the cannabis process in Austin-Brighton. We've supported locations and we've opposed locations. But Ret Moran thought it was very important for me to come on today's meeting to support Dr. Green Thumbs' proposal at 144 Harvard Ave. This is really not a difficult decision for him to support this use in this location, as well as the request to grant relief for the buffer zone. There are several reasons why this is a very suitable location and why this proponent deserves our support. The majority owner is MA-certified equity applicant and a Boston resident. The site location, 144 Harvard Ave, is in Ward 21, Precinct 5. They voted well over 80% in favor of legalization of marijuana.
Thank you, thank you.
If I can go to Gabriel Camacho?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Gabriel Camacho. I am the political director of United Food and Commercial Workers Local 1445. I'm here speaking on behalf of our membership that lives in the 02134 zip code, as well as abutters. We had two union members ready to testify, but they had to leave at 11:30 due to their...
You know, as you know, we've been at this since 9:30, so please, can you get to the point?
Tell us whether you're in support and the reasons for your support.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. We totally support this project by OPCO at 144 Harvard. Their commitment to racial equity and also on... Let me conclude on a personal note. I used to live blocks away from the Harvard Avenue business corridor. One of the reasons why I frequented that area was the variety of different businesses that one can pick from. And the same thing with cannabis dispensaries, they're like boutiques, they have their own particular products and culture.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Paul Self, City Council Lodge Michael Flaherty's office. The counselor would like to speak directly to the issue of the buffer zone. Adult use cannabis has come a long way since 2016. One of his major concerns had been and still is the process by which cannabis establishments are located throughout the neighborhoods of Boston. That's why he filed the buffer zone amendment to the zoning ordinance. He was concerned the neighborhoods would become negatively affected by the city of cannabis businesses with too many businesses located in the same area. The purpose of the amendment was to provide an extra set of eyes on the location of these establishments to prevent the establishment of a so-called green mile or concentration of dispensaries. It was not, however, intended to serve as a prohibition or a ban, but rather intended to serve as a further review. Where multiple locations are supported within the same area by elected officials of the community and the community as a whole, and where there are differing products amongst those facilities, variances may be warranted in those cases. That's why he's speaking today in non-opposition to this proposal, deferring to the district counselor and the community membership and community leadership. He appreciates his EBA's continued leadership in this area, and he hopes that his comments may have been helpful in trying to clarify the purpose behind the buffer zone regulations. I'd also like to point out that, as Counselor Ross stated, that 84% in Precinct 5 voted for legalization of marijuana in that...
Thank you. Let's... Can I just ask everybody else who will testify? First of all, I want to hear from... After the elected officials, I want to hear from residents from the neighborhood. If you're not a resident, please lower your hand, okay? And we'll hear from five people, so let's go.
Looks like we have Caitlin from the BPDA, did you want to give testimony here?
No, we will hold off on the BPDA, let's just go to residents.
Madam Chair, could I speak on behalf of the Austin Civic Association?
Please, go ahead, Tony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tony Disiduro, representing the Austin Civic Association. We would like to go on record in non-opposition to this proposal, given the concentration of proposals in this specific area of Austin. We want to defer to the board to make the determination regarding the buffer zone issue. Madam Chair, the last time we met on cannabis at 116 Harvard Ave, you asked me a question that I didn't have the answer for, and I want to provide that to you. As you know, we also throw in the proposal at 259 Cambridge Street in Austin. It's a little bit over a half-mile away from these three other proposals, but 259 Cambridge Street and 230 Harvard Ave, which is Mayflower. To answer your initial question, they are non-equity applicants, and they were approved by the board. 116 Harvard Ave that you just approved is an equity applicant, as well as the current one you have before you, which is 144 Harvard Ave, is also an equity applicant. So, again, given the concentration of proposals, we'd like to defer to the board to make a judgment on the buffer zone issue.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I testify on behalf of Representative Honan?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Alex Camarena. I'm an state rep, Kevin Honan. I am here on behalf of the representative to testify in his support of Dr. Green Thumbs and their proposed location at 144 Harvard Avenue. Dr. Green Thumbs has engaged residents and businesses throughout the licensing process, ensuring the communities concerned were heard. They have demonstrated their commitment to beautifying the Harvard Avenue Business District and embrace the local creative community, offering space to all who play their work. In addition to being intentional in hiring local Boston residents, they are dedicated to supporting the vitality of our neighborhood and businesses. Representative Honan would also like to note that while dispensaries in the area may be close in proximity, Austin is a community which voted overwhelmingly for the legalization of marijuana. Our bad news is...
So, let me stop you right there, because I think everybody has already used that statistic, and so we have that information in our files. Let's go on to the next person, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Barry Hines, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Barry Hines. I'm a direct abutter at 10 Glenville Terrace in Austin. I support this application for license.
Thank you.
Sean Glenn?
Hi, how you doing? I'm a local resident from Austin, I oppose this.
What is your address, please?
587 Cambridge Street.
Okay, you oppose it? Okay, go ahead. Next person, please, Ms. Ambassador.
Joshua Sullivan, go ahead.
Hello, yes, my name is Joshua Sullivan. My family's been in Austin for 50-plus years, I live on Cambridge Street. Hello, yes, my name is Joshua Sullivan. My family's been in Austin for 50-plus years. I live on Cambridge Street.
What's the address on Cambridge, please?
163 Cambridge Street, exact.
Okay, cool.
I am opposed of this.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Dina Munir.
Hi, my name is Dima Munir, and I live at 102 Austin Street. And I am in favor of this.
Thank you. Alex Shane.
Hi, my name is Alex. I live at 49 Cushman Road. I also work as a community organizer in the neighborhood to the Boston Cyclists Union, but I'm here as an individual today. I am opposed to this project, because I do not want to add a huge corporate-backed dispensary next to a smaller, local-owned shop that would have a negative impact on their business.
Thank you.
May I have Ms. Oliveira?
Yes. Go ahead. Say your name and address for the record, please. I sent a request on you.
Oh, okay. Can I, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. I'm an Austin resident, so I'm just, I wrote some notes down.
Your name and address on the record?
Yeah, Christian Oliveira, 58 Glenville. I'm a lifelong resident. I care deeply about this community. I've lived in Austin for 32 years. My mom's been here for 33. I supported marijuana legalization. I am an advocate for cannabis. But I don't believe the 140 Harvard Ave proposal will be a good for the community and surrounding business, because there would be too many dispensaries clustered too close together along Harvard Ave. Austin will be labeled as the go-to neighborhood for the pot shops. And Austin has a lot to offer in the way of arts, music, and food, but it does not need to be labeled as pot shops. So there's Mayflower at the intersection there. If I understand correctly, there's one that's going to be potentially opening at the end of Harvard Ave. There's other locations within Austin itself that, you know, this location could go and not be so clustered for, you know, between Union Square, Cambridge Avenue. And so I am concerned that having too many so close together will have a negative impact on our property values as well, which is exuberant, as I'm sure you all know. So I'm adamantly opposed to this proposal.
Okay, now we will cut off comments right there. Mr. Ross, can you identify who your equity applicant is and if that equity applicant is on this meeting?
Yes, the equity applicant is Leah Samura. She is a lifelong resident of Boston, currently lives in Mattapan. She's a black woman. She's very well-known to the community. She owns 51% of this business. The fact that she has investors who are willing to trust in her is, we think, is a good thing. There has been a lot of.
I'm sorry, what's Leah's last name?
Samura, S-A-M-U-R-A.
Okay, and is she an investor in any other cannabis establishments in the city or just this one?
Not within the city of Boston, just this one. And, you know, there's just been a lot of competition between the other applicant and this one, and that's been driving a lot of the negative comments.
Okay, so given all this information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for approval for this applicant only.
Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Cost is opposed. Motion carries, so you're all set with that, Supervisor.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm going to go back. Going over to our Braintree Street, case BOA 1318050, 90 Braintree Street.
This is Eric. I'll be recusing myself from this case.
This is a constructed new multifamily residential building with parking garage. Include 111 residential units and 58 parking spaces. Violation Article 51, Section 9, open spaces insufficient. Article 51, Section 57.2, the existing building alignment conformity. Article 51, Section 57.3, traffic visibility across the corner. Article 51, Section 8, multifamily use is forbidden. Article 51, Section 9, the additional lot areas insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 51, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 51, Section 9, front yards insufficient. And Article 51, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Jay Igerman of Ruben Junius and Rose in an office at 112 Water Street. With me are Ruthie Coolman and Lucas Herenshaw of Rhodey Architects, Dave Womster, the developer. Next slide, please. To orient everyone, this is a subarea of the Brighton Guest Street Planning Study Area from 2012. As this board knows, the neighborhood has been transitioning over to multifamily use. The site shown in red has frontage on Braintree Street and Penniman Streets. Those are both front yards. The Penniman, excuse me, Penniman Road. The Penniman Road Play Area is shown in green. Next slide, please. This is a corner lot. You can see that there's surface parking right now. It's a former.
So Mr. Herenshaw, can you go directly and tell us about, because I think your slides already give us context. Can you go to the proposal, please?
Sure. Next slide, please. The proposal is for a multifamily building. It will range from four stories to six stories. The tallest six stories are on Braintree Street, and it goes down to four stories towards Penniman Road Play Area. It'll be 111 units. The mix is three three-bedrooms, 24 two-bedrooms, 10 one-bedroom lofts, 27 one-bedrooms, and 47 studios, 20% IDP.
So tell us again what lofts are.
Yes, they're on the first story, and they have higher ceilings, as I understand. Four of these are going to be reserved for artists and will be IDP.
Okay, let me just get my numbers down here. So 47 studios, 27 one-beds, 10 lofts, okay?
And of the IDP breakdown, if we could go to the next slide. I'm sorry, next slide after this. These are the average sizes. So the studios average about 460. The one bedroom, one-bedroom, 640. One-bedroom lofts, 735. And you can see the two-bedrooms at 900 and the three-bedrooms at 990. Those are the averages with maximum and minimum. There are no compact units. Next slide, please.
These are just above from compacts, right?
The studio is at the minimum. The averages are higher, but there is one studio that's just above. That's correct. These are the IDP units, as you can see, to give you the breakdown.
Okay, so let's, I don't want to get too far into the weeds. So you've given us the units. Tell us about all your violations. What is required on parking? And what are you proposing for parking? Can you just talk about your violations?
Sure, just to the violations. So the area still has its underlying zoning of three-family, 4,000. So multifamily is not allowed without a variance. The building height would be to 69 feet, which is higher than allowed, and to six stories. The surrounding buildings are also at that height, but they also needed zoning relief. The FAR would be about 3.6, but because it's a three-family zone still, that would be 0.8 under underlying zoning. Usable open space needs relief. Again, the usable open space is designed for three-family in this zone. We're providing 9,500. That requires a variance. On front setback, technically, there is a required front setback on both Braintree and Penniman of 20 feet. And there's no mode. Normally, you would look to the mode, and there wouldn't be a setback. But because there's a park on this block, that's not, you need a variance. The rear yard is actually backing onto the Penniman Road Play Area. Our rear yard normally is 30 feet in this three-family zone. We're proposing just over 15 feet. And of course, there's the stepping back of the building to account for that. And we will, we have been working with Parks Department staff, and we have to go back to the commission for their approval. As far as parking, the parking is dictated by Large Project Review. Working with the Boston Transportation Department, we're doing just over a 0.5 ratio. So for the 111 units, there are 58 onsite parking spaces. And then, of course, bike parking is one-to-one with guests as well.
And is there a spot within the garage or whatever it is for loading?
I believe so, yes. I'm going to turn it over to the architect.
Yes, there's a covered, dedicated loading spot within the garage.
Okay, and let's see, any roof decks proposed?
Yes, Madam Chair. The public open space, I think if you go back, maybe to slide six or so, will be shown. Their roof decks on both the four-story portion and the six-story portion, they're designed to be away from the two-family houses on Hanno Street to the west. And they connect to indoor amenity space as well.
Okay. And they are available, they are available to all residents?
Most of them are. There are some decks, I think, on the lower level that is only to one unit. It's a mix. But most of the 9,500 guests is common usable.
Okay, and so that's good that you're trying to protect those Hano Street residences. Have you done a shadow study for the park?
Yes, Madam Chair, we did, as part of Large Project Review. Happily, the building is on the northerly side of the park, so there is no significant impact on the park with the southern exposure.
Okay.
In the summer solstice, so that's coming up, there are shadows in the early morning to the west in the backyards of those Hanno Street, but nothing on the open space.
Okay, and tell us about those lofts. Are they all on the ground floor so that they can accommodate different kinds of artistic endeavors versus working at a computer?
Yes, they're on the ground floor, and they all have a direct entrance to the street or to the sidewalk on the side of the building. And there is one that is fully accessible.
Okay, and one that is truly accessible, okay. Okay, okay. Any questions? How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Plans are nice. It's a nice drawing. There are, I guess, two issues that get raised for me. One is that there is a, you know, there's an awful lot of small units. The studios are nearly half of the total, and they are on the small side. And I think that just raises the question of what kind of units Austin-Brighton needs. I'm certainly familiar with the site. There was a training facility here that I used to go to, so I know the area. So that concerns me. And the other thing is that the, it just covers the entire lot. I mean, there's really, there's no really setbacks anywhere. And, you know, that's somewhat of a concern, but the drawings are nice and technically well-done.
Any other questions from the board?
Can you just go over the IDP, the number of units and affordability?
Yes, I'm sorry, if you could go forward. Going from memory, I think it's slide seven.
It's 22 IDP units, right? And what's affordability?
Right, 22. It ranges, so we'll have to go to that table. Some are as low as 50%. So some are as low as 50 and some are as high as 110. Indulge me. This shows the bedroom count, square footage, and the AMI levels. Just to summarize, there are four one-bedroom IDPs, nine studio IDPs. As I said, four of the one-bedroom lofts are IDP. Three of the two-bedrooms are IDP, and then two out of the three three-bedrooms are IDP.
Okay. I think the other question I was going to ask, is there a representative on from the BPDA? I know Jeff, you are on, but is there a project manager on? Or maybe this is a question that I'm going to toss out, and you can, guys can figure out who responds to it. But it seems that there is a lot of development being proposed within this area, starting from Cambridge going all the way over. What is there that's looking out for the street and how it prevents getting this walled in effect with very dense development, going back to Mr. Olick's point about the number of one-bedrooms and the number of studios and the small sizes of the units?
I don't know if project manager Caitlin Coppinger is on. We'll give her a time. But this did go, of course, for Large Project Review before the BPDA. It was found to be consistent with the Guest Street Planning Study that I alluded to from 2012, so.
The thing is that, I mean, Caitlin, can you, can you please unmute Caitlin, Ms. Ambassador?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, please, tell us from a planning perspective, not from a development perspective, from a planning perspective about how light and air and density is all being accommodated for in this triangle that includes Union Square condos that were built like 30 years ago. But then all the recent development that we've seen on Cambridge Street, on the edge of Braintree Street, starting at Cambridge, and all the internal development by Penniman, and all, if my memory serves me right, have come through for relief from parking. And I'm afraid that this neighborhood is going to become unsustainable in a very short period of time, because there's also been all the development that's come by on the other side of Hano, on Lincoln Street. So can you just kind of talk about what's really happening in this triangle that feels like it's being, like it's a new neighborhood altogether?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Madam Chairwoman. As you may know, project managers do review just single projects at a time, but I can speak to the Brighton Guest Street Planning Study that was adopted in 2012. So that study created a public realm context for the multiple industrial and commercial landscape lots that, you know, really took over this area. The study asked for the introduction of new streets and onsite circulation and service and loading. So this study also did require the creation of new urban blocks with complete streetscapes in order to create a context for new multifamily development. Specifically for this project, the study identified that 90 Braintree Street falls within this area for mixed-use development within FAR between 1.25 and 3.25, and a height between 60 and 110. So we feel that this project does fall within the planning guidelines.
Hold on, so for this project, the FAR was proposed between 1.0, what was it again?
The study called for it between 1.25 and 3.25, and a height between 60 and 110.
Okay, so again, you know, this, you know, it's, and so this proposed FAR is 3.6, which overreaches on the FAR. And, you know, this might sound like it's, you know, getting to the issues at the edge. But if you combine the FAR, the increase in FAR from the ceiling that was created by the study, where this further extends that FAR and the number of one-bedrooms and studios, it feels like it's, the density is skewed in some way. And the other question is, what thoughts were there on creating additional three-bedrooms?
Yep, that's a great question. So for the Dev TV project, we really did try to keep the density away from the park, which is why you see some of the step downs. That was a big consideration to make sure that the public park, Penniman, really did feel public. There were an ask for some three-bedrooms, which this project did include. It didn't come up as much within the public process. The more asked was in terms of greater affordability, which this project has contributed 20% of their units to the IDP program at a range of AMIs.
Okay, okay. Okay, let's see, anybody here, thank you, Ms. Coppinger. Anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgments to the board. As you heard from Caitlin Coppinger, who's the PM, who's went through a lengthy BPDA process. The applicant also held in a Butters meeting after BPDA process to communicate with Butters on the subsequent street. They also reached out to the Austin-Brighton CDC, who owns a number of money properties in that area. They've also met with the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association, which I believe will be on to testify, as well as the Austin Civic Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have one letter of support, I'm sorry, two letters of support and one letter of opposition.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, this is Marne McCray from Councilor Braden's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project. We appreciated how the proponent responded to concerns. We appreciate, the council thinks that the density for this project is appropriate, given the other projects that have been approved in, in this loc- in this area. We also appreciate that the massing is responsive to the project's location adjacent to Penniman Park. We appreciate that the proponent has included 20% IDP, IDP units onsite. And just in regards to the number, the unit mix, the, this project is tracking pretty much what's average in Alston Brighton in terms of the percent of studios, one beds, three beds. And in fact, they're including more than what we usually get in terms of the number of two and three beds, two and three, I, two and three bed IDP units, which the council also appreciates. And they're also including artist live work units, IDP, artist live work units, which is greatly needed in this location. And, yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Elijah Michael Flaherty, Councilor Duncan Spore.
Anthony, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Tony DeZidora, representing the Alston Civic Association. Madam Chair, we went on record in support of this project. As was mentioned previously, the project has gone through an extensive Article 80 Large Project Review. The proponents have been very responsive to the community concerns over unit mix and density. They actually reduced the number of units, they increased the number of family units, two and three bedroom, and did reduce the number of studios that were in the original proposal. It's very attractive to our membership regarding 20% onsite IDP, going from 50 to 110 AMI, lead gold level. But Madam Chair, the other, the other point I think needs to be made here too, and not to say one thing corrects another, but adjacent to this area that you speak of, and I absolutely agree with you, there is considerable development going on in it. The Boston Landing project and the Stop and Shop project, that did not come to the board because there were PDAs involved and simply went from BPDA to the zoning commission. There are a number of buildings, either proposed or built, that far exceed the Guest Street corridor study, zoning and planning study. This project, as was mentioned by the councilor's office, given the proximity to Boston Landing, the commuter rail station, to public transportation, is, is, given, given that, is pretty reasonable and appropriate for the area. You know, we appreciate the fact that we certainly don't want backups, traffic jams and what have you. But I think the emphasis on complete streets, transforming this area to a more bike-pet community rather than a, an industrial area will help alleviate those concerns. So we would like to go on record in support.
Hi, Noah, can you hear from me?
Noah Coolidge, Noah Coolidge with the Alston Brighton CDC. We own and operate two developments that are within a stone's throw of this project, including directly across Hano, Hano Street. We also have, and, and we think this project has worked closely with the neighbors to help ensure that it's a positive addition to the neighborhood and are also grateful for financial support through the community benefit process and ongoing efforts to enhance affordability in the area. And we look forward to welcoming new residents. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, Annabella, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. And then I will also speak as an IAG member as well. The Brighton Alston Improvement Association voted not to support the project. And as the majority of the IAG also voted not to support, support the project, we do acknowledge that 20% affordable, which is, which is great, it's what we seek. And we do acknowledge the $500,000 donation to the CDC, which is great for renovating the Hanno apartments. But we do feel that the property is too dense. It is, takes up the whole entire property, right up to the park. But more, it's six stories abutting, two-story homes on Hanno. And the outreach to the people there was not enough. And we do find it's too dense with no green space. Yes, Boston Landing and Stop and Shop, but they, Boston Landing put a train station, Stop and Shop don't need $2 million to infrastructure for the T. So they've done a lot to go forward. I just don't feel that this project has done enough to get this much density on such a small lot. Thank you.
John, do you want to go with more, and raise hands or?
Yeah, let's go with a couple more and then we'll close comment.
Okay, Jim Long, go ahead.
Oh, yes, hi, Jim Long, I live in Brighton. I was also a member of the IAG. And I would say that we also sent in a letter, which voiced many of our concerns in opposition to this project going forward, dealing with density, parking, and the fact that there's no setbacks. Coupled with the fact that this, has already been noted, there's a tremendous amount of development on that street. And this project is just going to make that condition worse. So I would be on record as in opposition, as was the IAG, by the way.
Minna Perez.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Minna Perez, representing hundreds of union carpenters that live and work across the city of Boston. At this moment, I want to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Bob Demico.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob Demico, BTD. With Large Project Review, we require 25% of the parking spaces be ready for electric charging stations. And the other 75% have the infrastructure so they can have an easy transition to future electric charging stations. Thank you.
Thank you. John, last one.
Hi, I was a member of the IAG as well and...
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Oh, sorry, John Bly, 1970 Commonwealth Dev, right in Mass, 02135. I, I was a member of the IAG throughout the whole process. And one of the disappointing things for me is the idea that a building can be built this dense, so big in that neighborhood that's developing right now, without any green space at it. I mean, I was on the IAG for New Balance and Stop and Shop, and there was community benefits that were given with all the construction, whether it was a train, whether it was an acre park. You know, I, I understand that this is up against green space. But at the same time, all the green space involved in this building is private for just the people that live in that unit. And, you know, I don't think that's a good precedent to start. I also think that the density in that neighborhood is, is getting a little crazy. And, you know, we've asked, anytime we asked them during the process, did they talk to the neighbors on Hanno Street? They said, well, we talked to the CDC or we talked to this. But it was always, you know, it was always a struggle to, to get them to do any kind of reach out. And I, I want to state my opposition to this. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have no additional reasons.
Okay, so the IAG was not in support, they voted for denial. They are before this, the applicant is before this board. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm going to put my voice in opposition because I do think that despite the fact that they have proposed 20% of IDP, I do think in the long run, the density is going to have a very detrimental effect on this community and especially on those residents on Hano Street who, who are, probably will not match the income level of those living in this building. So, but, so the, there's, I'm the only one in opposition, so the motion for approval with design review carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Going to go back to a case I called earlier, case BOA 1327640132, Chestnut Hill Avenue. This is a change of argument, including restaurant violations, Article 51, Section 16. Use is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, what is it? It's now 109?
He was on, Madam Chair, he's here.
Okay, this is...
Yeah, he's having some technical difficulties. Earlier, I told him to be ready.
Okay, is he on? Connor, is he on?
He should be on, hold on, I'm going on speaker right now.
What, are you, are you calling from the 781 number? Ms. Ambassador, can you please unmute the person who's at the 781 number then?
Yeah, yeah, I sent a request, it hasn't been accepted by the caller, but I did request it on my end.
Okay, please put your name and address on the record. Is this Lucas?
Connor, do you know if he's calling from that 781 number? No one's, it's been unmuted and no one's speaking.
He's, so he's talking to me on the phone, he's not calling in. His number is 617-686 number.
So he hasn't called then?
No. He's, he's on, he said he's going to turn his camera on, he's trying to unmute himself, but...
Is he on under the name Lucas? Because I don't see that name.
You don't have a microphone set up on your...
Um, Ms., um, let's see, Mr. Fortune, let's just go ahead with the next project. While, while, while we thought what's happening on Chestnut Hill.
Very well. Calling the next case, calling BOA 1279390566 East Third Street. This is an extend building foundation, 24 feet to the rear, increased space in each unit, in line with the modern living standards. Adding a walkout, sunken patio to unit one and rear decks to units two and three. Violation, Article 9, Section 1, reconstruction extension of an archiformed building. Article 68, Section 33, R Street parking is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, usable office space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the side yards insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano. With the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the applicant, Josh Crowe. We also have Eric Zacherson calling in, the architect from Context. Just a point to note, and the description has changed. We removed the decks, rear decks, so that is no longer on the property. That changed in our last deferral. So we are seeking still to renovate the existing structure, erect a rear addition in the back, and utilize lower-level space.
What I'm, what I'm trying to understand, counselor, is this a change of use from two to a three-family? What is it?
It's an existing three-family, Madam Chair, it's uninhabitable. It's basically unusable because the way it's set up, we're just adding the rear addition and basement, living space, it's already there, we're extending that.
If it's uninhabitable, was that, we, well, let's talk about the rear addition. What is the total square feet of that rear addition?
So it's 24 by 19 rear addition. Right now, these units are 515 to 530 square foot units. The idea is to add about 2,000 square feet of additional living space with that addition. And in doing so, we also have that use of the lower level that you can see, sort of that bottom space that walks out onto a sunken patio in the picture that's in the rear elevation picture now.
What's the zoning district here?
It's an MFR, Madam Chair.
So multifamily, okay?
Residential, yes.
Okay. And tell us about that basement.
Yeah, so right now, there is livable space down there. What we're proposing is to have the front lower level just to be common mechanicals and unfinished basement space. We put living space in the back, or proposing to put. It has kitchen and dining room and a half bath, but it has a full walkout into the rear sliding doors. It would go into a patio area for additional open space for that, for the condo residents of that building. That is not a basement apartment, it's connected to the upper level. So in total, the first floor unit with the lower level would have 1,520 square feet. It's a proposed three-bed, two-bath in totality.
Three-bed, two-bath is, is for the first unit? And what's the square footage?
1,520 square feet, and that includes, includes the lower level and the first floor. As we go up to the second and third floor, they're both proposed 985 square foot, two-bed and two-bath.
Okay. Okay. And there is no rear decks?
Decks were moved up because of Gate of Heaven group had asked us to.
And parking, tell us about the parking?
There's no parking, Madam Chair. Although because it's staying as a three, that we believe the parking violation should not have been cited. We're not changing anything that's already there, we're just adding the addition.
Okay, and let's just see. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine, it, it is correct. They're showing the living on the lower level, but it does have a full walkout to the rear and then the bedrooms are on the, I guess, street level or that lower level unit, but...
Correct.
No other real question except for, I, I don't have the context, but it looks like the building to the right-hand side extends out. Are you basically aligning with that building?
Yeah, that, yes, they go back further than we do, but yes.
And what, and what's the rear yard that will be left once, if, with this proposed extension?
10 feet, 11 inches, Madam Chair.
And what's required under zoning?
20.
And your addition is 24 feet and that's how the rear yard gets eaten up with...
Yeah.
The 10 feet, okay. How, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgments to the board. Our office held in a butters meeting for this project. There were no serious concerns raised at the butters meeting. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have one letter of support, one letter of opposition.
Madam Chair, I'll start with John Yetman. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is John Yetman, I reside at 538 East Score Street. I live about a block and a half from the controls project. I am opposed to it because they're obviously going to be adding more tenants. There's no parking, that area is extremely tight for parking. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Council President's Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition based on continued feedback and opposition from neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association during this process on high-density rear yard setback and concerns about exacerbating South Boston's existing parking crisis. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Elijah Michael Flaherty, Article 68 violation, as well as the community opposition, Councilor Duncan Spore in opposition.
Tom and Marie, go ahead.
Hi, Tom and Marie Magazic, we're at 564 East Third Street. We're director butters and we are in support.
Madam Chair, I have no additional reasons.
Okay, so given that information, may I have a motion, please? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to the right.
Is there a second? Um, in, uh, for one of a second, may I have another motion?
Sorry, I was on mute, I was making a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review, um, and specifically looking at, uh, any opportunity to increase the rear yard setback, um...
I'll second Eric's motion. Ligorous.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You are opposed, you're, uh, uh, I to him, opposed, there's two in, two in opposition with the motion carries.
Thank you, members of the board.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one two six one six four seven fifteen Mehan Street. This is to increase living space and add extension for egress, porch is at the rear. Violation, Article fifty-five, section forty-one point one, conforming with the existing building alignment. Article fifty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-five, section nine, the side yards insufficient, and Article fifty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz from Adams and Maranti, with their business address of three fifty West Broadway, South Boston. I'm be here on behalf of the applicant today, who's joining us, his name is Pierre Jolas. Also joining us too is the architect Andrea Brew from Remake Design. As stated, this is a proposal to renovate an existing two-family by adding additional living space, and an addition on the third floor, squaring off the roofline, and adding a new extension of egress in the rear, all while using the existing footprint of the building. This proposal is located within a three-F four-thousand sub-district. We have four violations that are all pre-existing, non-conforming with this proposal. Conformity of the existing building alignment, the front yard is currently at three foot, three inches, and zoning calls for fifteen feet. Uh, the modal calculation was calculated at ten feet. Our proposal calls for six feet, nine inches to the porch, and nine feet to the dwelling unit. This will be a new porch construction with two separate entrances for both units. FAR is, is currently, um, e- existing at a point nine, uh, what's required is a point seven, our proposal is asking for a one point seven four. The rear yard is, is, what is allowed is twenty feet, existing is at three point nine, and due to the removal of a broken fire escape and a bulkhead in the rear, the proposal calling for five point five, five feet and five inches.
Okay, hold on, hold on, Counsel, why were you deferred the last time?
So we were, this is not owner occupied, um, so we asked for the full board.
Okay, so tell us, um, the size of each unit.
Okay, so, um, unit number one will be approximately thirteen hundred and eighty-eight square feet, which will consist of a basement in the first level. Uh, the basement will consist of, of a den, gym, utilities, storage, and a bathroom. Uh, and that's approximately five hundred and fifty-nine square feet, with a ceiling height of seven foot, eight inches. Um, the first floor is approximately eight hundred and twenty-nine square feet, which will consist of a two-bedroom with a living room, living room, kitchen, and a dining room, and two bathrooms. Unit number two...
Go ahead.
Unit number two is approximately sixteen hundred forty-one square feet, which will consist of the second and the third floors. Second floor would consist of a kitchen, dining room, living, and a den. Third floor would consist of a bedroom with, with a laundry and three bathrooms total. Uh, the, there will be a roof deck that will be in exclusive use to unit number two. Uh, that roof deck will be accessed by hatch, and it'll be approximately about four hundred and forty-five square feet.
I'm sorry, unit number two, how many bedrooms is unit number two?
Three bedrooms.
So it's three bedrooms at sixteen forty-one, and it, and they also get access to the roof deck, no occupancy in the basement. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, well, there is occupancy in the basement, there's no bedrooms in the basement.
No bedrooms, yes.
Got a den and gym, but, um, plans are fine, and I think the, the modal, it's, it's, the context fits with the street, no, no real questions.
Any questions from the board?
So Madam Chair, there's one thing I do wanna, um, highlight on here and bring to your attention. Uh, there is a, this was a building code violation associated with this property, uh, for a, uh, a new opening on the left-hand side of the property, which is slightly under the three-feet setback to the property line. So we're, we're asking the board to stipulate that no building code relief will be granted, we are not seeking it, uh, and allowing the issue to be resolved through BPDA Design Review.
Okay. Um, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tiffany Galvado here with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This proposal has undergone an extensive committee process. Um, I currently have two letters of opposition on file, as well as a recommendation of denial from the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association. Additionally, the Jamaica Plain Neighbour, Neighborhood, the council wrote a letter with the recommendation of approval with three provizals. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer the board's judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we have those letters the Mayor's Office spoke of.
Excellent.
Ma- ma- Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, that large Michael Flaherty, the council going to record in support. Thank you.
Okay, and Jennifer, go ahead.
Uh, hi, my name is...
Hi, my name...
Sorry, you can hear me, okay?
Yes.
My name is Jennifer, and I live at forty-seven Rossmore Road, which is around the corner from this project. Um, and, um, I'm one of the neighbors, including, um, from the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association, that oppose this project. Uh, the, the most important thing to point out here is this is only a seventeen hundred square foot lot, it is a tiny lot. And they are, uh, proposing FAR, which is two and a half times the allowed FAR. This building, as it exists right now, which they're, you know, reusing the footprint, is on the property line, and it's only, uh, about three feet away from, three point three feet away from the building next door. So the increase in density in this, the increase in height, uh, and pulling it forward towards the street with the double entries, makes it even bigger, um, than the existing building, which is also out of, uh, out of compliance. It is grossly dense and oversized for this tiny little one-way private road. And I think that the builder can do a much better job reducing the density in there, um, and also, uh, getting rid of the flat roof and making it a gabled roof to reduce the height. It's casting shadows on the building next door, they did shadow studies. And, um, I'm also concerned that the expansion of the living space into the basement can easily be converted into two more bedrooms. There's a full bath down there. Uh, so I think that, um, granting these variances would set a really bad precedent for replacement housing. It's just way too big for the street, the neighborhood is against it. Uh, we have, uh, at least one neighbor who can stay this, long enough on this call, but who sent in a letter of opposition. Um, we think that it's just way too big, and it could be redesigned very well to fit in. Uh, so I am, I, I oppose this, and I hope you support the Neighborhood Association, which also opposes this.
Thank you. Joy, John Abrams, and Jenny?
I, uh, I'm, uh, one of several Butters that lives next door at thirteen Mehan Street, which is about three point three feet. Um, uh, we have a, assigned, uh, MOU with a developer that addresses concerns related to potential damage that could happen to our property as a result of construction, including that caused by underpinning, um, since we're so close, about three point three feet away. Uh, the MOU requires the developer to have insurance coverage for our property.
Let me just ask you, um, are you in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Uh, I, truthfully, I, I'd like to suggest that, that the vote is delayed, uh, and, and if I could, I'm, just wanna provide this information for you to consider, uh, though we have an MOU.
We, 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 we do not get in the middle of, um, interpersonal, um, uh, understandings. Uh, we are just looking in, at it from a very specific perspective. Um, so can you just, uh, it, put, put your, um, put your opinion on it, please?
But I, I, what I can say is that it, and this is the, the most essential for, thing for me to say, at this time, it appears that their insurance is not in compliance with what the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Association was asking them to be in compliance with, and what we would like them to be in compliance with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, have no additional reasons, thanks.
Okay, given, um, given the, um, information... Uh, there a quick rebuttal from the applicant, uh, applicant's representative, and then we will go to a vote.
Yes, um, thank you, Madam Chair, Ryan Spitz. Um, so, uh, we do, we understand the first woman's, uh, representation, who is part of the, uh, the SNA Civic Association, which did turn in opposition. A lot of her concerns should be addressed through thirteen Mehan Street. Uh, we've been productively working together with them to addressing all their concerns.
So from thirteen Mehan Street, is this, is this both by the same developer?
Yeah, no, thirteen Mehan Street was the gentleman that you just heard from, John Abrams.
Oh, I see.
We've been collabora, we've been working collaboratively with all the owner, owners, um, on a mutual agreement of understanding. And the only issue that seems left to, to be spoken about is the fact of, um, of, of the insurance. We have provided them with a certificate of liability, uh, just like any other board would have.
But, but, okay, thank you. So, the, and, and please tell us again what the size of the lot is?
The size of the lot is, uh, seventeen hundred thirty-eight square feet, and it's, and...
It's a seventeen, it's a seven thirty, thirteen, seventeen thirty-eight square foot lot in a three-family zone that requires four thousand square foot lot for just the first unit. And now, and so now you're proposing, okay, got, got it, so, um, may I have a motion, please?
Um, I, I'm gonna make a motion for a deferral, I, I just think there's a few outstanding issues that could be resolved, and they should come back.
Are you punting, Mr. Olick?
Kicking the can down the road. No, here, I, I will, I will, uh, second the deferral, cause I, I...
Okay, second punter, okay. Uh, is there, so there's a motion, there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, the date, please?
We can do on the July twenty-sixth.
Okay, and what's... Okay, and what specifically should the Counselor, uh, have a response to, uh, to both Mr. Olick and Mr. Robinson?
Well, eh, I mean, there seems to be an, an ongoing conversation with the neighbors at thirteen, and that, that should get resolved, either one way or the other. Eh, eh, if they wanna stay in opposition, then that's fine. Uh, but I think it seems like it's a, a, a thing in progress, as well as some of the concerns from the folks in the SNA. Eh, I mean, maybe when we come back, it'll still all be unresolved, in which case, we won't punt anymore, but for now, I think it would be, uh, an effort to encourage people to, to find resolution. Uh, and, and my concern is with the lower level, I, I, unfortunately, I, I agree with, or, no, unfortunately, I think the den and the gym look to be bedrooms that are just waiting, so I think, uh, the proponent should reconsider the, the lower level base. Uh...
Yeah.
Program, so, um...
Totally agree with that, okay? So, um, so I think you have your marching orders, Counselor Spitz, so we'll, we'll see you in, in, um, July. And then the next case for eleven thirty?
Calling DOA one one five two zero three nine seventy Von Hilleran Street. This is a change of argument to a cannabis establishment. Violation, Article sixty-five, section twenty-one, use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I, uh, let me just check to see if it's Jeffrey, Dan, or Jennifer, who's here to give... Go ahead, is it, are you here for this proposal?
Yes, thank you, can you hear me? Uh, hi there, uh, thank you for everyone's patience, I understand that you've had a very long day. Um, so I am Attorney Jennifer Schultz, uh, from Sullivan and Worcester, one post office square in Boston, and I am here representing the co-applicants for this application for a conditional use permit for a cannabis establishment, uh, located at seventy Von Hilleran Street in Dorchester. It is in a local industrial zoning sub-district within the greater Dorchester Neighborhood District. Um, the locus that you see on the screen is located essentially in a small island between I ninety-three and multiple train tracks. Uh, Butters of the location are few, and include an electronics materials contractor, uh, moving and storage company, and an antiques company. Um, as I noted, we are only seeking a conditional use permit for the use, for this change of occupancy. Here with me today is the owner of the property, Dennis Kalijia, and also the operator, which is a veteran-owned business, CNA Stores. This would be their third operation in Massachusetts, their other two are in Haverhill and Amesbury, and here available to be answered...
Hold on, let us get like right to the core of the questions that we have. Tell us about, um, uh, I think we, we know that the Cannabis Control Commission and other places look at your security, et cetera, et cetera. Please tell us about your hours of operation, tell us about your parking, tell us about your number of, um, staff that you're proposing, and how do you, how will you deal with overflow?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, so the proposed hours of operation will be nine to nine, seven days a week. Uh, as you noted, this has been reviewed, and it has been approved by the BCB on February sixteenth. Um, there will be seven parking spaces, I think if you go back, uh, to the prior plan on page one, you can see those, which includes one handicap space. This is more parking, uh, than is required, no parking is actually required for this use, and so this is to ensure that parking users for the location park on this site, uh, and not on the streets, although I will also note that the street does have public parking, if that were ever needed. Uh, to answer questions, um, related to the operation and any overflow in security, I would like, uh, one of the members of CNA who is with me, Robert Defazio, Dan McGoon, or Michelle Whitley, to please be able to respond to that in greater detail.
Madam Chair, Dan McGoon here, um, Director of Security for CNA Stores. Uh, our security footprint will be similar to the operation we currently have in both locations, in Amesbury and in Haverhill. Uh, our guest will enter...
Hold on, uh, uh, yeah, hold on, um, I think the one question that Counselor did not respond is how many staff people are anticipated? And if you have seven parking spaces, where are staff anticipated to park? Sorry, did, uh, what happened?
Is someone from CNA still available to speak? I don't know if they've become muted again. Dan McGoon was speaking prior?
Yes, I'm sending a request on me them. Hi, Dan, can you hear us? Yes, they accept them, okay, go ahead.
I, I have it, Madam Chair, I apologize, my new book was stuck there. Uh, as the, as Counselor stated, we do have seven spots on the property, and there are, uh, public spaces, uh, on Von Hilleran Street and Locust Street. Uh, CNA Stores is also, uh, advocating, uh, access from the MBTA, we are footsteps to the red line at the JFK. Uh, all of our employees will be, uh, incentivized to take the train, uh, to work, and we will be providing MBTA child cards as well.
And how many employees?
We will have seven employees on shift, uh, every day, nine to nine.
When are deliveries anticipated?
Uh, deliveries will be on a random basis, uh, both for product and, uh, cash, uh, those will be randomized, uh, for security reasons.
Okay, um... Okay, how are the plans, um, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are fine, uh, so can I just confirm, so this is, this is has a Von Hilleran address, but it's actually facing Locust Street? It, it's the rear of the old, old Bostonian, is that right? So you're taking down the, sort of, old industrial buildings, or...
No, so, uh, Mr. Robinson, it is located in its own standalone building that exists right now, approximately two thousand square feet, and it will just be a regenerative reuse of that existing building in that location. It is abutting the old Bostonian, which will continue to exist.
Got you, okay, I see, okay. Um, no, no questions, I, I know this very well, it's, it's fairly off the beaten track.
Mr. Robinson, I just wanna figure out, you know, will there be, um, uh, a potential parking, uh, conflict with residents or other uses, um, you know, given the fact that there are very few parking spots here?
There, there are, I mean, it, there are very few parking spots, obviously there's seven on site, but, you know, th- the area over there is a little, I'll say, I don't know if Wild West is the right one, but I know this strip of land pretty well. I'm not sure how regulated or, or how, how well it's taken care of, it seems, it's very industrial, obviously, so there's handful of curb cuts everywhere, so, I don't know if I can answer that question for you, but I, I understand where they're, where they are now, yes.
Yeah, okay, got it. Um, any questions from the board?
Just the standard one about distance from other facility, facilities.
Uh, we are beyond any buffer zone, and therefore have not been cited for any violations.
Wow, okay.
I know.
So I, I do, the closest is on Clap Street. So I do, the closest is on Clap Street, which is over by South Bay, but it's, it's pretty far away. Okay, I, I agree with Mr. Robinson, there's, there's all kinds of parking in that area.
Okay, and the existing building looks like it's just a, a building with a door and no windows, is that correct? There, there are few windows in the existing building, there will be, if you sort of scroll down, additional windows and doors will be included in the redesign and reuse of the property. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, George Wing with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted a public meeting for the proponent on November 30th, 2021. Butters raised a number of concerns, including safety issues, given that the dead-end street is poorly lit and has led to loitering and other illicit activities, and overall, the applicant was receptive to feedback and connected with the butters and the business owners to make the area safer. The applicant was also approved by the BCB. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeppren, City Council, Frank Baker's office, would like to go and record in support.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have six letters of support, we do have one letter of opposition, and it's from that text drawing company.
Okay, anything specific on that, Mr. Fortune?
It's a pretty interesting letter, I can read a little bit of it.
Yeah, what's the opposition based on?
They do government, sorry, safety is their concern and the sensitive nature of their business operations.
Hmm, interesting.
They do opponents for the Department of Defense.
Okay, so it sounds like the applicant needs to be in touch with them to ensure that everything is, everything works in everybody's best interest. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, and BPDA Designer View, since it sounds like the facade is going to undergo some change.
And this petition only?
And this petition only, yes.
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
We're gonna try this one more time for Chestnut Hill, hopefully we can get this thing taken care of. Calling DOA 132 7640, 132 Chestnut Hill Avenue. Change of occupancy include a restaurant, violation Article 51, Section 16, the use is forbidden. Name and address for the record.
Okay, is Mr. Lucas, is Lucas on, Mr. Lucas Lutz?
Just a hand raised. Annabelle, do you have any info on the owner?
So he, he's on, he's on as an attendee, it's the phone number 617-686-3350.
Oh, thank you.
Just sent a request to unmute you.
So could I speak to the board on this? This was approved with the Two Life Building, and originally, I was on the IAG for it, and during the whole process, we, they always spoke of putting a coffee shop there, and I think the attorney put in that it was commercial without food, so that's why he's here, because now he can't open a coffee shop, because IAG cited him on food, but the whole process that we went through was always discussed to have a coffee shop put in at the building that was approved and built.
Thank you. May I have? Connor, in the meantime, Connor, you want to talk through process?
Absolutely, so as Annabelle mentioned, this was a part of the BPDA proposal for Two Life, you know, redoing the building to make it accessible for seniors. It was always envisioned during the community process that on the ground level, there would be the storefront here, there would be a community cafe. Due to an oversight either on TBA's part, or BPDA's part, or the applicant's part, it was not put down as, as being a restaurant. So this gentleman here has built out most of the facility, he met with the Brighton Austin Improvement Association, received their full support, there's no concerns raised in the community, he just, because it's a forbidden use in this particular area, that's why he's before you today.
And so he's not, i- is he, is he doing takeout, or is he, I'm assuming this is, it just talks about the use being forbidden, which is the restaurant, so he's not doing takeout, he's just doing a restaurant?
Correct, yeah, it's just a cafe with seating in there.
And what's the name, what's the name of the establishment?
It is, sorry, give me one second. It's the, can you hear me? Yep, we can hear you, yes.
All right, I'm so sorry, it's like, you know, I had big problems, somebody called me and somehow everything disappeared. Well, my name is Ahmed Dari, I'm the owner of in-house cafe at 132 Chestnut Hill Avenue, Brighton, at Two Life Community. So I'm presenting in-house cafe.
Okay, so you, you're doing in-house cafe, it's not takeout, you're planning on it as a sit-down cafe, right?
Well, I'm planning for takeout.
You are planning for takeout, come on, this has only been cited for residential, just for restaurant use and not for takeout.
Okay, that's fine.
It's just, it's not cited, so all, all we can do today is approve the, the, the restaurant use, but not the takeout use, okay?
That's fine, that's okay.
Okay, so, and while we have you, do you have experience with takeout in, in the city?
I do, I own the restaurant for, since 2027, at one Harvard ad, 194 Harvard ad.
In Brighton?
In Austin.
In Austin, okay, cool, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are great, no questions from me.
Okay, Annabelle, do you want us, any questions from the board? Annabelle, do you want to make any further comments? Your hands are raised, are we good?
We're good.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
For this, for this applicant only.
Is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If, if the board members could just stay on for five minutes, please? Thank you. Thank you, good luck. Meeting is now adjourned.
Recording stopped.